Lead is extremely heavy and it typically is heavy this time of year. Grass mold in that medium category. If you were watching the midday show, I was sneezing my head off during our weather hit. And so I'm sure I'm not the only one. Highs today, yep, those 90s are still in our forecast. This is not mid-October weather. We're seeing those upper 80s also closer to Galveston Bay and Galveston Island as well. Now, we're continuing to watch this fire danger across the state of Texas, specifically southeast and east Texas. Anywhere in the yellow and that orange, this is high to very high risk of wildfire potential for today. We have burn bans across the area. Not every single county, but a good majority of them are having those burn bans that have started a couple of days ago or today or even tomorrow. Bottom line, don't be outside burning anything. There's just a lot of dry vegetation that fuels that fire risk. Also, what fuels the fire risk is this lower humidity. So it may not be muggy when you go outside, but it fuels that fire danger. So we're seeing this afternoon, our humidity values can drop to the 20s. As we go throughout kind of the next couple of days, we'll slowly see these humidity values rise. Now, what that means is there's a chance of more clouds in the sky. That means there's more moisture available as those rain chances do increase. Also means it's a little muggy when you walk out the door first thing in the morning and your hair kind of poofs on up. We also have that wildfire risk because of how dry it is. Over the last six weeks, this is data going back to September 1st, Bush has gotten just over an inch of rain, Hobby just over an inch and a half, but College Station and Huntsville are essentially bone dry. Brenham, less than a half inch of rain. Now, going down to Galveston County, Galveston, League City, even Bay City, they are a little bit wetter. So we see these pop-up showers closer to the coast time and time again, but a lot of this rain actually fell in the month of September. For the month of October, these places also are extremely dry. Now, going throughout the next few days, we will have those rain chances increase. And so we'll have those rain chances increase going into this weekend. So hopefully those will help us on out if my graphics can load. Sometimes the Wi-Fi in this room is pretty naggy. So we're seeing those rain chances increase going throughout the next few days. And we're also seeing those temperatures increase still in those 90s.
All right. Thank you for all of that. We're going to be closely watching that, hoping for a little bit of rain to better those numbers. All right, right now, we do have Sky Fox up in the air, so I want to tell you what's going on. We're going to take you to Polk County right now, give you a bird's eye view so you can see for yourself what is going on here. So we have officers there looking for a suspect. Again, Polk County Sheriff's Office currently looking for a, because of a shooting incident that happened, this is the Leggett area, for any of you who are familiar with that area. We're told that the suspect they're looking for is Lee David Stroll. And they are telling us that he is considered to be armed and dangerous. So right now, we're looking at a vehicle. We don't know if this is what he was last driving or what's going on with this, but you can see zooming in there on the license plate. And so if you know anything about him, you are just urged to call. You can call the Polk County Sheriff's Office, or you can call Crime Stoppers. If you know anything, you can certainly always remain anonymous. But again, he is considered armed and dangerous. And you're asking, do not approach him if you happen to see him, if you know who he is. Again, his name is Lee David Stroll. We're still waiting to find out what's going on with this. We just know that it's a shooting incident in the Leggett area of Polk County. Again, we'll keep Sky Fox over the scene. We will, to let you know, just as soon as we find out more information, but we're closely monitoring it and we'll let you know. All right, right now, let's give you a live look of what's going on with the Black Caucus. So we've got some redistricting going on, lots of decisions to be made with what's happening here. We're going to listen in and see what they have to say.
... of their dreams, their desires, their aspirations will not come across here in this body. And so that's essentially. Would you like to?
Yeah, I just want to double down on exactly what the chairwoman just said. If you accept the premise that we have a representative form of government, that suggests that every part of our country has a voice.
That's right.
If you strike down Section 2 of the VRA, we will not have a representative form of government because some voices will not be represented.
Yes?
I'd just like to ask Congressman Green, based on whatever happens, based on the decision, would you need to rewrite any of the John Roberts Voting Rights Act before you bring it up for discussion?
That's great. That's a great question. Clearly, the question was, in light of what this decision may be, and we won't know this decision until June, probably, will we have to rewrite the John Robert Lewis Voting Rights Advancement Act? And we are working with our partners, our allies, our lawyers, to look at it and relook at it to see how we can strengthen Section 2 as well as reinstate Section 4 and 5.
I'd just like to ask Congressman Green, forgive me if I misunderstood what you said at the end there. You said your district got moved to a different county. You don't believe a black person can win. Forgive me if I'm totally wrong about this. Are you saying you don't have hope of winning reelect, of representing your district in the future? Is that what you're saying? I just want to make sure I understand what you said.
To be very specific, perspicuously so. I never said that. What I said was, there will be one fewer, one less person of African ancestry from Houston, Texas. I have been blessed to be in the 9th Congressional District. The new lines do not require that I move to run for a congressional seat. They moved the 18th Congressional District to me. I don't have to move to the 18th Congressional District. I have said I will be on the ballot, but I haven't said what I'll be running for. I said I'll be on the ballot. But it makes sense that I would run from the area where I happen to live, where 70% of my constituents are. The 18th Congressional District is composed of about 70% of the people that I currently represent. I will be on the ballot and I will announce.
And he'll be in Congress.
Well, thank you. Thank you. But I hope that satisfies your curiosity. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, we've heard concerns that the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court...
Been listening to Congressman Al Green there, talking about the Congressional Black Caucus on the Supreme Court hearing. We are closely monitoring this and you can certainly always find the latest on Fox26Houston.com with all the latest developments there. Right now, we're going to take you to Capitol Hill to see what's happening there. We've been hearing from House Minority Leader Hakeem Jeffries of what's going on with the Democratic leadership in Congress, who is taking its turn at the podium today. Let's see what they have to say.
Because of toxic provisions in their one big ugly bill, medical research has effectively been halted in the United States of America. And Republicans are proposing dramatic cuts to the Centers for Disease Control and the National Institute of Health. We're witnessing an all-out Republican assault on the health care of the American people. It's unacceptable, it's unconscionable, and it's un-American. And that's why Democrats are standing up and fighting to decisively address this crisis that our Republican colleagues continue to visit on the American people. It's now my honor to yield to the distinguished whip, Catherine Clark.
Thank you so much, Mr. Leader. Here we are again, another no-show week for Republicans, another week closer to the ACA open enrollment period, another week closer to a catastrophic GOP-made health care cliff. This is a solvable problem, but it is an urgent problem. And we need Republicans back in DC, at the table, and negotiating. And that needs to happen now. Despite what Mike Johnson says, we do not have an eternity to deal with this. Families are already finding out their premiums are about to skyrocket. Parents are realizing they cannot afford to stay insured. Let's take Shawna Verstegin. She's a mom of two in Wisconsin, who says she is sick to her stomach because her monthly premium, our premiums are about to rise by $800 a month. That's $9,600 a year. And for what? So Republicans can cut taxes for the billionaire class at the expense of everyone else? And I mean, everyone. This is not about party, or ideology, or geography. Let's ask Allen Reynolds, a proud Florida Republican. His wife has been notified that her premiums are going up $700 a month. Allen said, "I voted for Trump. I did not expect this." We are hearing stories like this every single day. Yesterday, Mike Johnson said he didn't have a strategy. Come on, Mike, don't sell yourself short. You do have a strategy. It's the same strategy the Republicans have always had. Repeal the Affordable Care Act, take from working families, raise their costs, defund their health care, and give that money, all that money, to the very, very wealthiest Americans. It is a losing strategy. It is an unpopular strategy. So, Mr. Speaker, for the sake of your own constituents and mine, why don't you try a new strategy? Come back to work, take a seat at the table, and let's stop this health care crisis you created before it's too late. And now it is my pleasure to yield to the outstanding chairman of our caucus, the gentleman from California, Pete Agula.
Thank you, Whip Clark, and thank you, Leader Jeffries. As you know, as the Whip just laid out, the Republican-controlled House has not voted since September 19th, nearly one month ago. And in that time, House Republicans have continued to be on vacation. They haven't been holding town halls, they haven't been finding out ways to reopen government, and they haven't been working to save Americans' health care. Republican Representative Kevin Kiley from California even called the speaker's decision to adjourn the House embarrassing and the wrong decision. What have Trump and Republicans been doing for the last few weeks? Refusing to work with Democrats, digging in deeper into their anti-health care position, threatening federal workers, and even offering a bailout to Argentina to the tune of $40 billion in taxpayer money. Yesterday, Speaker, the speaker admitted that he didn't have a strategy, and when it came to his position, just that he would not negotiate. Well, Democrats have a strategy. Work with us in a bipartisan way to fund government that keeps health care, lowers the cost of health care, and ensures Americans keep their coverage. If Republicans fail to come to the table, health care for constituents in red districts and in purple districts and in blue districts will continue to spike. Republicans are acting as if their own constituents won't be hurt by their decisions and the recklessness that they've created. But the truth is, thanks to the big ugly law and the looming expiration of the ACA tax credits, everyone is going to see their health care costs increase. In some states, Americans are already seeing the premium sticker shock when shopping for their health care plans for 2026. Soon, this will be rattling households all across the country. Enough is enough. It's time for Republicans to get serious, to work with us, to save health care. The country and their constituents are watching. Peter Jeffries.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Pete. Questions?
Leader Jeffries. Pete?
Yeah.
Thank you, first of all, for coming on Fox News. We really appreciate it. We hope it's the first of many more interviews to come. Second, just on the question that I asked you outside, this video, I don't know if you've seen so far, but there's this video circulating that shows a group of Democratic lawmakers go to the speaker's office, mess with the signs in his foyer, and then one of the lawmakers can be seen yelling at one of the Capitol Police officers. I'm just wondering if you agree with that kind of fight? I know that Democrats are trying to fight, but also, how would it feel if Republicans did that at your office?
I haven't seen the video, so I'm unfamiliar with the characterization that you are presenting. Congresswoman Annette Baragon has issued a statement on the incident, and I think her statement speaks for itself.
But what do you think about it?
Same answer.
Have you spoken to the former woman about the incident or US Capitol Police?
Briefly.
Do you think any action should be taken on that, if you speak with Capitol Police?
Congresswoman Baragon has issued a statement as it relates to the matter. I look forward to a subsequent conversation with her as well as the Capitol Police. I have nothing to say about the situation that I haven't seen unfold on video at this moment.
I have it on video, if you'd like to see, because I think other reporters are going to ask.
Excellent.
Thank you, Leader Jeffries. Given the recent court-issued restraining order against Representative Cory Mills, I just wanted to get your message, get any message from House Democratic leadership about kind of, what does it say that your Republican colleagues have kind of remained silent or kind of dismissed the allegations that have come out against one of their members? Just what are your general thoughts about the situation?
I want to yield to Catherine Clark on this issue, but this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic violence is a serious issue in this country for women all throughout America. And the notion that House Republican leaders would dismiss the seriousness of what is clearly emerging as an untenable and frightening situation relative to Representative Mills is irresponsible. And the Congress should be better than that level of dismissiveness that has been on display amongst my Republican colleagues.
Thank you. The allegations against Representative Mills are disturbing, but as the leader said, it is the response from Speaker Johnson that is not the first time of dismissing allegations, a restraining order that's been put in place, as somehow not a serious question. And it is the same way he has approached this entire health care issue. And it is a crisis that will be felt by every single hard-working American in this country, but it is going to be felt first and hardest by women in this country. And his refusal to come and even negotiate, his saying that health care is some sort of, you know, ancillary issue to what we're dealing with here, his allowing government to shut down in order to say, "It's my way or the highway." And what we are watching happening to women is really, it is chilling to watch. If you take the fact that since the Republicans have enforced abortion bans, we have one-third of all the counties in this country, there's no safe place to have a baby. There is no obstetric care in one-third of all our counties. And in some states like Georgia, that's more like 50% of their counties. We are saying to women that all the gains that they were able to make when they can have health insurance and not worry about being a human pre-existing condition that denied care in the past to many women, that you are now able to afford and find health care. And we're saying, "Not for you. Not for you, not for your family." And when, you know, about 40% of all births, and that's far higher in Mike Johnson's district, are covered by Medicaid, it's almost 65% of the births in Louisiana. And we're saying that, you know, those cuts to Medicaid, this will just somehow trickle down from the billionaires and provide health care, reopen maternity wards across this country. We hear the dismissal. The American people hear the arrogance and the dismissal that is in all of this messaging. And the American people are making note that if you do not have nine zeros behind your account number in your savings or checking account, you don't count. And that message to American women and just writing off these serious allegations against a sitting member of Congress as something frivolous and a ridiculous question speaks volumes of where they value their constituents, and especially women, in this month, as the leader pointed out, that it's Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So we hear the message loud and clear, Mike Johnson. We hear it from the GOP. We don't matter, but we're going to keep showing up and do our jobs. We're going to come and fight for the American people so that they get health care and can live with security in their homes, in their communities, and know that they can afford to provide a decent life for their families.
Dismissiveness that we saw on display earlier today is consistent with what Republicans did earlier this year in passing their one big ugly bill, the largest cut to Medicaid in American history, stealing food from the mouths of hungry children, women, seniors, and veterans. And all of that was done so that Republicans could provide massive tax breaks that are permanent to their billionaire donors. That's the focus of House Republicans, Senate Republicans, and the Trump administration. Hurt everyday Americans, including women, infants, and children, in order to reward their billionaire donors. That's unacceptable to us. We believe the American people find it unacceptable. And they will be held accountable.
Leader Jeffries, the Trump administration is threatening even more mass firings as the shutdown goes on. Should Democrats demand these firings be reversed in, to end the shutdown?
We believe that these firings are illegal, violate the law, and will be reversed, either congressionally or by the courts. Donald Trump and his toxic, corrupt administration have been firing federal employees since the beginning of his presidency. And to the extent that they're pretending as if the shutdown has anything to do with the continuation of that effort is a laughable proposition. It's disturbing that they're using hard-working, federal, civil servants as political pawns to continue their toxic approach to undermining the ability of the federal government to deliver services effectively and efficiently to the American people. It appears that Donald Trump and the administration thought that they were going to somehow bully, threaten, and intimidate Democrats into backing down from our position that we need to decisively address the Republican health care crisis. The Republican efforts to intimidate the American people have failed. And that's why we maintain the position that the only way forward is for Republicans to finally decide to sit down with Democrats, negotiate a bipartisan path forward, reopen the government, pay our hard-working federal employees, and address the health care crisis that Republicans have created, that is actually devastating hard-working American taxpayers all across the country, including in rural America. That's an unacceptable situation that the country finds itself in right now, which is why we believe we're standing...
The Democratic side on this 15th day of the government shutdown, certainly considered an urgent problem. Democrats are asking Republicans to return to DC since they last voted a month ago. Of course, we do our very best to bring you both sides of the aisle, and we'll continue to show you those and share those with you throughout the day. Right now, we're going to take you live to Jerusalem for a very somber moment. Many families there in Israel are celebrating being reunited with their loved ones who were being held hostage, while others unfortunately received the hostage and their bodies. And so right now, we take you to a funeral where you can just see the pain on their faces, where, and some laughter too, as they remember the people they loved, but at least they have closure here for a moment. Let's listen in.
...............................................................................................................................................................
Again, families there in Jerusalem celebrating and mourning the lives of their loved ones after their loved one's body was turned as part of that ceasefire deal. We're going to take a quick break, then we'll be right back.
Fox 26 is...
Welcome back to Houston Live and Local at One. Quite a dramatic scene playing out right now as we speak in Polk County. We do have Skyfox Live over the scene. We also have a news crew there keeping an eye on what's happening on the ground as well. Just to give you an idea of what's happening, we're still waiting to find out a whole lot more. But what we know right now, Polk County Sheriff's Office tells us that they are searching for a suspect. We don't know what went down here, but I can tell you, at least one person was shot. We're still waiting to find out if they are okay. But there is a shelter in place in Leggett. That's an unincorporated town in Polk County. So, this is near Parish Road and Wilson Road, if you happen to be familiar with that scene. This is the latest development. SWAT is now on the scene. So, we don't know exactly what they're searching. Earlier, we saw that there was a, what just looked like a white vehicle that they were really looking into. So, we can only assume that this person was driving. This is who they're looking for, the suspect. Officers tell us is Lee David Stroll. He is considered armed and dangerous. So, officers are urging you, if you know him, or if you know who we are talking about, do not approach him. Just contact the police immediately if you happen to see him, or if you know anything about this case. Again, all of this playing out in Leggett, which is an unincorporated town in Polk County. It looked to us like, from what we can see, you can see there's a lot of trees. So, it's hard to tell because of those with Skyfox up over the scene, exactly what's happening. Obviously, they keep our photographer at bay just for our own safety, for our crews. But we do know that they are there on the scene. We could see a building, so we assume that perhaps they're searching that building. And this is, again, our photographer who is there on the scene right now. So, we know that they were looking into that vehicle, but we don't know what that SWAT team is doing there unless they're just there to try to help assist and find this person who is considered armed and dangerous. Again, we know of at least one person shot, and it's hard to tell even what this is. It looks like it might be private property. It's hard to tell. It's certainly a beautiful scene, but what is happening there is far from beautiful. It is considered a dangerous situation because there is a shelter in place in Leggett. And you think about the time of day. I mean, schools in that area of Leggett ISD will be letting out soon, so I don't know how that affects anybody there, if schools are close. But we are doing everything we can to find out what's going on. If you look to the far left-hand side of your screen, where there aren't quite so many trees, I see some people walking there. It doesn't seem like necessarily a very urgent situation that we can tell of people running around, but that could be because we really honestly can't see very much. As you can see for yourself, a lot of vehicles there. We don't know if all of those cars happen to be a part of this investigation, or perhaps that this could be a working environment, and those were already out there. Obviously, when you see the white vehicles, we assume that those are all law enforcement. But I do see a lot of different color vehicles. And again, very difficult to tell what this is. But we're going to keep a close eye on this for you. As soon as we find out more, again, the fact that we have a crew there on the scene and Skyfox up and over it, if there are any updates going on in Polk County, we will certainly let you know. All right. So, we were on Capitol Hill just moments ago, if you were here. And you know, we were giving you the Democratic side of things. They're urging Republicans to get back to Washington DC. They're begging them to make a new vote, since the government has now been shut down for 15 days. This time, we're going to listen in on the Republicans and see what they have to say about it. Here we go.
Pick it up. We vote on it today. We send it to the President. The President signs it into law. The government reopens, and then we can be happy to have all the conversations the Democrats want to have about other issues. But they will have a ninth opportunity today to vote to open the government. They had an eighth opportunity yesterday, and they will have, if necessary, a 10th opportunity to reopen the government tomorrow. All we need, all we need, are five courageous Democrats with a backbone who aren't afraid to buck their leadership, who are marching them right over a cliff. So, we're willing to have, as I said, conversations about all the other issues that they want to talk about. But they can't, that can't happen while they are holding the federal government and all these federal employees, and our troops, and our air traffic controllers, and our TSA agents, and our Border Patrol officials hostage. Open up the government. Every day that this goes on, the problems are compounded for federal workers and for ordinary Americans. Chuck Schumer may think that every day gets better for them politically, but I can tell you, that is not the experience of the American people. This needs to end. We can end it today. The bill is sitting at the desk. We're going to get a chance to pick it up and pass it, open up the government, and get to work for the American people.
Leader, good afternoon.
Yes.
Can you characterize why some Republicans are resistant to help boost Obamacare?
Well, I mean, I think that there wasn't a single Republican that voted for Obamacare in the first place. And I think most Republicans believe, and I think the data bears this out, that the enhanced subsidies, the COVID-era subsidies, which, by the way, were set to expire by the Democrats, are a program that is desperately in need of reform. It's going to cost, over the next 10 years, $40 billion a year. And there are no income limits. There are zero premium policies. There are people who don't even know they have coverage. The way the program is structured, the government pays directly, subsidizes insurance companies. Insurance companies are incentivized to go out and enroll more people. They auto-enroll people, which is why so many people don't even know they have coverage. And as a consequence of that, you have people all across the country. And I said, in that market, in that marketplace, you can believe this, this last year, over half of the people never filed a claim. Now, that might mean that they're healthy. Hopefully, that's part of the reason. But I think part of the reason is, there are a lot of people out there don't even know they have coverage because they don't pay anything for it, and because the insurance companies get paid directly by the federal government to auto-enroll them.
This is kind of a divide inside your conference, right? There's some who say we have to help people out, even though if we don't, even though we don't like it. And others are saying, we fought against this since 2009. Why are we trying to prop up Obamacare?
Well, and I think that's going to, and, you know, that's the conversation that we will have when the time comes. Once we open up the government, is there a path forward that would enable us to make the reforms to address some of the problems I just mentioned with the enhanced premium tax credits? But this cliff was created by the Democrats. They could have fully funded this. They could have funded it for 10 years. But they wanted to prioritize a lot of their Green New Deal policies when they did their reconciliation bill. But there are, there are folks out there who I think see a path forward here. And I said, we're happy to have that conversation, but we can't do it while the government is shut down.
The President has talked about using this shutdown to cut what he calls Democrat programs. He said he's going to come out with a list of additional programs he wants to cut. Are you comfortable with him using the shutdown to end one Congress and make these cuts?
Well, I don't think that, I'm not comfortable with any of this being done, because, as I've said, I don't like government shutdowns. Nobody wins in a government shutdown. And this is a, you know, this is a decision, these are decisions, I should say, that are being forced on the administration by the Democrats voting repeatedly, be the ninth time today, to keep the government shut down.
But these cuts and firings have never been necessary without a shutdown.
Any administration makes decisions in a shutdown, and I've been through a lot of them, with Democrat presidents as well. They are going to prioritize the things that are important to them. When they make decisions about where they're going to allocate money, which departments and agencies are going to get less, which employees are essential, which aren't, those are all decisions that administration is forced to make when they're trying to manage in the middle of a shutdown, which is why it is so important that the Democrats vote to end the shutdown, that none of these issues that you're asking about become real. But they're real right now to a lot of people because they're getting much smaller paychecks as a result of the Democrats' obstruction.
Mr. Leader, there are a number of polls showing that more Americans blame Republicans than Democrats for the shutdown. Of course, those numbers are starting to shift. Why do you think that is, that more blame Republicans? And how do you think about strategically to change the public perception?
Well, and I've seen polls that have a very different conclusion. But as I've said before, this isn't about polls. This is not a political game. Maybe it is for our colleagues on the other side of the aisle who say that this is getting better for us every day. This is not a political game. And the polls, I don't care what the polls say, nobody wins in a government shutdown. The government needs to open up again, and holding it hostage to do stuff like what they're trying to do has just never been done before. I mean, think about it. $1.5 trillion in new spending in their proposal to keep the government open till the end of October. That's $1.5 trillion for two weeks to keep the government open. Really? I mean, this stuff is, they are so far over the edge on this. Some of these, some of these people, rank-and-file Democrats who know better, need to walk it back, and as I said, do the courageous thing and open up the government. But, you know, as far as the polls are concerned, I don't think that, that shouldn't matter to any of us. It's not who wins or who loses in the blame game. It's about the American people, who are the ones who are losing if the government stays shut down. One more.
Mr. Leader, can you just walk us through your next steps here? Obviously, you've indicated you want to move forward with defense, potentially other appropriations bills. Just talk us through the strategy.
So, one of the things that the Democrats and Republicans want to see is a normal appropriations process. We passed three bills for the first time in seven years before the August break. Those three bills are available for conference. The House is ready to go to conference on them. So are we. And so, we are having, we, we're hotlining, going to conference on those three bills. If we can clear the hotline on both sides, we can go to conference, we can actually get the appropriations process going forward. So, that's in the works. Also, I filed yesterday on the Defense Appropriations Bill, which is available, passed the Senate Appropriations Committee, 26 to 3. And it's something that we ought to be moving forward on. And hopefully, if possible, we'd like to attach some other appropriations bills to it and do the same thing we did with the first Minibus, and that is, you know, package some bills that we can move at the same time, and get the government funded in the traditional way, which is through the annual appropriations process. So, that's, that's kind of where we are. Those are the two things that are, that are in the works this week. And we'll find out tomorrow whether the Democrats want to proceed to the Defense Appropriations Bill, and what other bills we might be able to attach to it if we can get consent to do it.
Mr. Leader, the President has discussed a lifeline, $20 billion to Argentina. Do you think that's responsible, especially given the fact that we're in a government shutdown? Do you doubt that in America, first of all?
You know, I think that it, something along the lines of what he's doing has been done in the past. I mean, previous administrations, if they think there are reasons in the interest of economic stability, in areas of the world that are important to us economically, those, there are previous administrations that have made similar decisions. In this case, my understanding is, it's a currency swap, and so, it's a, it's a, structured in a way that hopefully will support and give some stability to their economy. And I think the US has some strategic interests in that region of the world. So, you know, again, I think it's a decision the administration is making based on precedent that past administrations have used. And I hope that the Argentine economy responds in a way that keeps them a stable economy, working in a part of the world where America needs allies. Thank you.
We're voting.
The standoff continues in Washington DC. This time, you've been listening to the GOP leadership's point of view. Republicans saying they only need five Democrats to agree with their terms, and they say that would end the government shutdown. And of course, both admit this is not about a political gain for either of them. But we have been talking to politicians over the place, and we'll continue to give you both sides. And I can't wait to tell you that the government shutdown's over. But for today, we enter day 15 with no end in sight. We're going to take a quick break, and we'll be right back. Welcome back to Houston Live and Local at One. I'm Melissa Wilson. I tell you what, our political reporter Greg Rugin is one busy guy doing his very best to keep you up to date on the latest politics. This time, he talks to Senator John Cornyn about everything from his upcoming race, and of course, the government shutdown. Let's listen in.
Greg, first of all, let me just say, it's really a dumb idea to shut down the government because the same problem that was staring in the face that you found insurmountable before the shutdown is still there when you reopen. But this is really just a performance by Senate Democrats because Chuck Schumer is afraid of his own political base and his future as the Democratic leader. So, he has to show, as futile as it is, that he's, quote, "fighting" President Trump and Republicans. But they've simply overreached. We're happy to talk about any and all issues, including healthcare and insurance premiums, once the government reopens. But shutting down the government in order to throw a temper tantrum, to try to get your way, makes no sense. And we ought to be able to do better than that.
There's a lot of discussion about the Obamacare subsidy that was added on during the pandemic as an accommodation for Americans. Democrats believe it should remain in place. Is that a negotiable issue?
Well, COVID-19, the pandemic is, is over. And so, the increased subsidies for Affordable Care Act, or Obamacare, policies need to go away. And we've got about $37 trillion in debt, and it's a very serious issue for our country. We're spending more money on interest on the national debt than we are on defense. So, we need to revisit that, particularly the provisions which take the cap off of the income levels that the subsidies were available for, because we now have very wealthy people getting free insurance courtesy of the US taxpayer. And we need to, we need to look at that and reform it.
What about the issue of providing government-funded healthcare for people who are here without permission, the undocumented, the illegal? The Democrats say that's really not the case. You, I know, have looked into it. What is the reality?
Well, the reality is, in the one big beautiful bill, which is now called the Working Families Tax Cut Act, we said that illegal aliens are not eligible for taxpayer-provided healthcare. It's really one of the incentives that attracts people to come to the United States illegally. It's really like a magnet, together with all the other incentives they have. The Border Patrol calls this the pull factors, or the magnet that attracts people to come. So, we cut that off in the one big beautiful bill, the Working Families Tax Cut Act, and Democrats want to turn that back on. And as, deny it as much as they will, we have the proof in the text of the legislation. In addition, they...
All right. Greg Rugin, again, talking to Senator John Cornyn about all things politics. Now, let's take you back to Capitol Hill. So many live conferences going on there today with the government shutdown heading into day 15 today. Right now, we're going to listen to Senator Chuck Schumer. He's talking healthcare, the government shutdown, on the Democratic side again.
We can to make that happen. Now, about the riffs. Every day, the Republican chaos seems to get worse. They seem to double chaos almost on a daily basis, and nowhere is this clearer than at HHS. Trump and Vot manage to do something truly astonishing. They, quote, "accidentally" fired twice as many public health workers as intended. It's vicious, it's mean, and it's incompetence, all wrapped up in one. Let me say that again. They meant to fire hundreds of people, but they were so careless, they accidentally fired hundreds more. They chose to vindictively fire thousands of federal workers and couldn't even do that right. No one, no one is forcing Trump to fire scientists or doctors in the middle of the season. They're doing it because they want to. The goal of Project 2025, a vote, and it seems Trump, is to just decimate the federal government, no matter how it hurts the workers, and no matter how it hurts the American people. They're gutting America's public health defenses because they want to. And don't take my word for it. Senator Lee said, quote, "Russ Vot has been dreaming of this moment ever since puberty." Republicans need to get serious. They need to negotiate. We are ready to negotiate, reopen the government, and deliver desperately needed healthcare to the American people. Senator Murray.
You know, for weeks, we have been hearing a lot of heartbreaking stories from folks back home in my home state of Washington. Families who are absolutely panicking about their premiums that are doubling. There are small business owners who are having to think about abandoning the job they love to get employer-sponsored healthcare elsewhere, or just foregoing coverage altogether. But today, I actually want to talk about our neighbors, Idaho, because today is the first day of open enrollment in Idaho, which means today, right now, families are getting their first real look at the cost of Republicans inaction on healthcare. Republicans don't seem very eager to talk about that, but there is no running from the fact that these hikes are going to crush people. That's why last week, I actually held a call with people in Idaho who are watching their healthcare costs go through the roof, and here's what I heard. One retiree, who's not old enough yet to be on Medicare, told me about how her premiums are going to jump by 173%, almost triple. You think that's bad? Another Idahoan I spoke with had learned that with the tax credits, his premium would, will be $300... be $367 a month. Without those tax credits, a whopping $2,232 a month. But Bob and Susan are far from alone. There are more than 100,000 people in Idaho who rely on the ACA tax credits to help them afford their healthcare coverage. Today, today, those families will log on to shop for a health plan and feel their heart drop as they see these prices have skyrocketed. They're wondering if they can even afford healthcare now. It is terrifying and it's happening right now in Idaho. And it's coming to states across the country in two weeks. Several other states have already opened their window shopping for these health plans. People in my state have already gotten notices about premiums doubling. And yet, all the while, Republican leaders are trying to stick their heads in the sand and trying to pretend that everything is fine. On one hand, we have many Republicans saying, "What's the rush? We can talk about maybe doing something on healthcare later." Never mind the fact that they refused to talk about this earlier, even as they rushed to jam through tax breaks for billionaires a few months ago. And on the other hand, we have some Republicans who are basically, basically saying they don't want to do anything. In fact, some Republicans still wish they could repeal the Affordable Care Act. How detached from reality can Republicans get? It is bad enough, so many of them see, can see the iceberg coming and are saying, "Ah, we'll worry about that after the ship goes down." But we've also got Republicans saying, "But you, but you wish this ship had sunk earlier." Some Republicans are all but cheering for these higher premiums. Republicans may have chosen to shut down the government rather than address this healthcare, but Idaho just opened up enrollment and the rest of the nation is around the bend. President Trump and Republican leadership may try to bury their heads in the sand, but they are not going to be able to bury the headline here. Healthcare premiums are doubling, tripling, and even in some places, quadrupling. Families do not have the luxury of ignoring healthcare. But instead of putting a single penny forward to help people afford healthcare, Donald Trump is giving $20 billion taxpayer money to Argentina in a bailout. What happened to America first? So the bottom line has not changed. When Republicans are ready to get serious, Democrats will be at the negotiating table where we have been for weeks, ready to reach a bipartisan deal that opens up the government and addresses this healthcare crisis.
So this is a really terrifying time. And I know that people down here in Washington, I think, make a mistake when they think this is about politics. It's about people. When people think this is about Washington as usual, this is about working people and what is frankly outrageous in the terms of what it's going to do to their lives. Down on these marble halls, we are not talking to Americans right now, but when I go home to my state, I see so many people who are facing what is for their families, a moment of deep crisis. When I come to Washington, I hear about how many days, counting the days of government shutdown. Well, families all across America right now are counting the days before they know the staggeringly devastating thing is going to happen, which is going to be their healthcare costs doubling and tripling. I've sat down with small business people as thousands upon thousands of small businesses all across the country get their health insurance through the exchanges, who tell me very plainly, they cannot afford to keep health insurance for them or their few employees if the rates skyrocket again in just a matter of weeks. I talked to moms who have special needs kids who are in this state of panic that if their healthcare costs go up, it will devastate their family and their ability to sustain care. We are in the midst of a healthcare crisis, the likes of which we have never seen before in the history of our country. Literally, 2026 is going to be the year, if we do nothing, that the most people in American history lose their health coverage between what the Republicans have already done to Medicaid and what's going to happen with the ACA in the beginning of the year. I cannot tell you how outraged I am that we here in Washington are having a fight over a budget where our Republican colleagues are not even willing to sit at the table right now and negotiate a way to help Americans in their time of crisis. And what frustrates me about this is it's not that hard to do something about it. I've watched over the last 10 months as Republicans have seemed to be able to find the money for so many other of their priorities. Whether it's the explosion in hiring they're doing in ICE, as we see the work going on in cities from coast to coast, whether it's finding the money to give billionaires the biggest tax cut.
You've been listening to Democratic leaders speaking out on our nation's capital, just concerned about a possible looming healthcare crisis and saying they really hope for a bipartisan deal to address this problem and to finally get the government up and running again. You can count on us all day long to bring you the very latest. Rashi is up next on Houston Live and Local at Two. Stay tuned for that. Welcome to Houston Live and Local. We appreciate you being here with us this 2 o'clock hour. We're following a lot of breaking news. First, we want to do, begin with what's happening over in Polk County. Now, we do have a crew there, also another one en route. We do understand that investigators are looking for a suspect who is armed and dangerous. We also understand that there is a shelter in place happening right now. So our Tan Radford has been looking into all of those details. So Tan, what have you heard so far?
You know, we're just getting little by little of information. We don't have a lot of details. It is limited right now, but we do know is that there was this shooting suspect that police are looking for and they also released a mugshot of this person as well. And this has been going on since around 10 o'clock this morning. We did send Sky Fox out there and we got aerials. We were able to see a SWAT team there on scene. But again, we don't know the reason for the shooting or who was injured or if there were any injuries at all. But this is just a look at the scene here. You know, there's a lot of police presence and a lot of law enforcement officers out there. And right now, Leggett ISD, which is in that area, their school is on lockdown since they were informed this morning. They have district police present as well as state troopers on site and students and staff. They are safe currently, but their release time is at 4:00 PM. There's also going to be a press conference held at 4:00 PM. So we'll be learning more information around 4:00 PM. And like you stated, we have crews there already. So we were able to get some footage from photographers that are on scene. And it's just been limited right now. All we know is that that person, his name is Lee David Stroll, and he is considered armed and dangerous. First responders and police officers haven't said if they've gotten him in custody or what's going on with this guy. But again, his name is Lee David Stroll. We don't have an age or anything of that sort, but he is considered armed and dangerous and residents are asked not to approach him.
Yes, and I did want to share the alert from Alert Me Polk County. So they say the Polk County Sheriff's Office currently responding to a shooting near Parish Road and Wilson Road in the Leggett area, just north of FM 942 East. Persons in the vicinity are advised to remain shelter in place as a suspect is still being actively pursued by law enforcement. And Tan, I know that we're looking at some video here where it looks like it is near a residential area. And a very scary situation, the parents are probably getting text messages or alerts from the school saying that there is a shelter in place and they're learning that there is this shooter, armed and dangerous, on the loose. And hopefully, they will be able to capture him soon. Actually, we are just learning now that he is in custody, according to investigators. And one of our photographers is there on the scene and reporting for us. Luckily, that suspect is now in custody, so the search is now over. Again, we were looking for this person right here and they have now been captured. So good news there, Tan.
Yes, that is good news. And again, at 4 o'clock today, they're going to have a press conference. So I'm sure they'll give us more insight on exactly what happened or if, you know, there was anyone wounded or what exactly happened in this shooting. So we'll get more details as the story develops. I believe Sherman is on the way there now.
Yes, and what also is great is hopefully that shelter in place is lifted. So by the time that school is out, everything is fine, back to normal. Because when you have to answer to children about, "Why does this happen? What's going on?" It's can be a very dangerous situation. So I'm glad that we were to tell you right here, live on air, that he has been captured. A photojournalist on scene there for us, let us know about that. So good news there, but we're learning more information on where he's captured, what led up to this shooting and just a lot of questions.
Why SWAT was brought in as well, because we've seen a lot of SWAT on scene. You know, this has been ongoing since about 10:00 AM this morning. So here we are at 2 o'clock. This has been hours of searching for him. We don't know where he was hiding. We don't know what he did. So I'm sure we're going to have all those questions answered in the next couple of hours here.
All right, well, thank you so much, Tan. Now, we want to take you to southwest Houston, another story that we've been following for you. So apparently, a woman was shot allegedly by her ex-boyfriend and then the ex-boyfriend turned the gun on himself. Fox 26's Gillian Hartman has been following this story.
Hey, it's Gillian Hartman with Fox 26 and we are covering breaking news in the Katy area. There are two shooting scenes that are both connected. Here's what we know so far. Deputies say that a man shot his ex-girlfriend multiple times here at this parking lot Wednesday morning, then drove to a gas station and shot himself. The woman is now in critical condition at the hospital. Deputies were called around 7:00 AM to a shopping center along Mason Road where this all started. The sheriff says a man and his ex-girlfriend were in separate cars when the man allegedly shot his ex multiple times and then drove off. Here's what the sheriff told us.
The initial reports we had there were that she and another vehicle were parked side to side. We've since determined that she was meeting there with a, possibly an ex-boyfriend. So this is another case of intimate partner violence, it would appear. They were next to each other when he fired shots and then he fled the location in his own vehicle.
Authorities say they then tracked down the man at a gas station about 10 miles away along the Katy Freeway. Here's video of that second scene. They say he was armed inside the gas station and he ingested what they believed to be narcotics. Then he shot himself and died. The man was in his early 40s. Now, the victim in this case is in her late 30s. She was originally taken by ambulance to a hospital, but due to the severity of her injury, she was lifelighted to another hospital. And at last check, we're told she's in critical condition. Right now, the Harris County Sheriff's Office and Houston Police are working together on this investigation.
All right, now let's talk about the weather. It has been very nice outside, which is a great refreshing change for us. But I will say, I have a little bit of a complaint.
Let's hear it.
All right. The allergies.
Oh my gosh, I know, right?
So we have this trampoline outside in the backyard and the kids were off for Columbus days, they're like, "Just jump on the trampoline."
That's a good thing to do.
But now we are just taking a lot of Zertac and not overdosing. We're just, we're just treating the symptoms because it's just, it's really bad out there.
Yeah, no, it's ragweed. It's very, it's very specific. There's one allergen that is off the charts and it is ragweed. And that is something that we're definitely dealing with. And I'll agree with you, that is also, that's a negative in this weather we're having.
And you know what? When you're all make-up, makeup is all done, everything, when the mascara and then the eyeliner and the eyeshadow, because your eyes are watering, it's a whole thing.
No, totally a thing. And we're not having a lot of optimism as far as the improvements go.
That's okay, that's all right. Cooler temperatures is nice, though.
I have enjoyed the mornings and I'm going to do it again the rest of the week. We have a little bit of a change in our pattern coming this weekend. But in the meantime, it's a lot more of this kind of happening outdoors as we've got a little haze perhaps, but overall, conditions are very comfortable. We're looking at about 87 degrees right now, north wind, about 12 miles an hour. So that's very reasonable as well. Dew points in the 50s. That's, that's that north wind helps us get those dew points much lower than what we're accustomed to. And that helps us measure that humidity. So here are the allergen levels. First of all, I'm just downright shocked that the tree pollen is at none right now. And I, maybe there's a little bit of it out there, but not enough to really have any measurable differences. Grass and mold are at medium, but that's the weed that I'm talking about. So remember, there's heavy and then there's extreme. So this is beyond just the heavy levels. We've gone to extreme levels of ragweed that's out there and that we're all kind of dealing with. This map has also had some negative signs to it. Waller County has now been added. So we've got almost a complete circle around Harris County at this point. It's my understanding that Harris County is going to talk about a possible burn ban tomorrow. So we'll probably have an update from Harris County as far as whether they're going to join the rest of their neighbors or if they're figuring that they can wait a little bit longer. They're not going to be able to wait a whole lot longer because the drought conditions are going to continue to worsen. Yesterday's high temperature, right at 90 degrees, that's what we're forecasting again for today, if not 90, 89 or maybe 91. Sugar Land, they decided to outdo themselves. They went 92 for the high temperature yesterday. So that ozone action day is another thing that we've been talking about and it's in place again today. So this pattern that we've been locked in is going to continue for another day or so until Friday. That's when the change comes. Current temperatures, 86 in Huntsville, Columbus, 89, Hobby Airport, 87, 84 degrees down in Galveston Island and no rain at the moment. And our drought monitor will be updated tomorrow. It will be not as good as what it is today. I expect more drought conditions across the area, as noted by our drought monitor, for tomorrow. And we've certainly seen very low rain totals overall since we've gotten into September, really is when that drier air really began or the, the lack of rain really began to take place. So we'll continue a quiet pattern for us here in the Texas region, for most of Texas. There's been some unusually active weather over on the West Coast as this low pressure system. You see that swirl as it's coming through? That swirl is actually what's going to end up pulling the front across our area over the weekend and changing our weather pattern. It's also going to potentially bring some severe weather toward the central portions of the country. That's all within the next 48 hours or so. Back here at home, again, we're talking about that fire weather outlook because of those north winds, because of the dry vegetation and the no rain in the forecast, those low humidity levels. That's why we're seeing some of the higher levels possibly for that. Want to get out to the tropics real quick to remind you that Lorenzo is out there. It's a tropical storm and it's going to stay out there for the most part, not bothering a whole lot of people. So another comfortable morning, no complaints here from Rashi and I on that. Low humidity during the afternoon, that'll lead to another pleasant evening. That'll mean more conditions that are favorable in the morning. We can start talking about a very, very isolated possibility of some weather. Quick look at the seven-day forecast shows, rain chances up to 40%. So not guaranteed rain, Rashi, but certainly some possibilities when we get to Friday and Saturday. That's that front, won't cool us down, but isolated chances of rain going into the winter. chances of rain going into the weekend.
All right, JD. Thank you.
Yep, sounds good.
All right, now we're following a case that a lot of you have been interested in. We're talking about the 15-year-old boy that was taken by immigration officials. This was on Monday. So if you don't know the backstory, basically, he, according to his mother, has autism. He has the capacity of a four to five-year-old. He's 15 years old, though. And he was with his mom selling fruit on the side of the road in Houston. And then he was taken by authorities. And later, it was about yesterday or two days ago where he had emergency surgery for appendicitis. And his mother has been separated from him. And what has been under scrutiny is HPD's response to all of this. Well, earlier today, at Houston City Council, we do know Police Chief Noe Diaz spoke about the department's handling of this situation. Let's listen in.
The determination that he did not have a disability. But are our officers licensed to make a medical determination of that nature?
We didn't make a medical determination. He could communicate. He was seen by our medics, and they too communicated with a young man in a Spanish language, obviously. But everybody, he could communicate, he communicated with everyone.
Right. But just because someone communicates, I just want to be careful that we're not saying that someone doesn't have...
If you don't, as a parent of a special needs child, have a bracelet, something sewn into their clothes, or let us know at the police department that on your street, there's a special needs child, then we don't know. So we're not clinicians. We're just here to recognize when there's a need.
I understand, but just because, again, I have cousins who are on the spectrum. They do not have anything in their clothes. I just want to make sure that if we're presenting public information, we're not saying, no, this, this young person is not, does not have a disability. We don't have access to that information.
We do not. There's HIPAA rules.
Okay. Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the concern.
Say, Chief, one point you might want to... ...his photo was several years old.
We believe it's when the child was 10 years old, and the child, because his information is 15 now.
Sure, but that's relevant. The mayor, Protem, Castiglia State.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you for bringing the video. I did have an opportunity to see the video. It was disturbing to me this morning because I watched what was presented to us yesterday. And part of my struggle was the language barrier, and I was depending on someone who was translating that information. And I thought the person said that this young man was nonverbal. I also thought there was several things that were said that we didn't see in the video. And so I'm concerned that the story had some mishaps. And so it's hard for people to trust what actually happened because the mother also said she spent the night with her son, and the son was saying goodbye to her. I mean, it was, it was a pull on your heartstrings story. Did the mother spend the night with her son? I didn't hear any of that in the, in the timeline. Is that a different scenario? And, and, and none of that is shown on the, on the video. But she stood here and said she spent the night with her son, and her son said goodbye to her. That, that was the translation that...
I did not hear her say that. I know that when he was in the care of the Office of Refugee Resettlement, she did not spend the night there. So he went, he did go to the hospital. I've seen photos that people have shared with me where she brought some sort of gift to the young man at the hospital. I am not sure if she spent the night at the hospital. I doubt it. But I'm not, I'm not positive.
Okay, maybe, maybe she visited him, maybe at the hospital, and then they said they called him, and then they released him. But they released him once she was gone instead of when they were there. So the timelines kind of are a little different, but I appreciate, I appreciate the timeline that you gave. But I think the, the thing that stood out the most to me was I couldn't figure out how, if we had a missing persons report, that we didn't make the connection. But you explained that very clearly to us when we watched the video this morning. The young man's name is Emmanuel. But when we asked him what his name was, he said Manuel.
And it's a hyphenated name. So Garcia Gonzalez. So it was a reverse order.
Right. And so there was no way that the system picked up similar names, but not the exact same name.
In this case, it did not.
Right.
Yes. Yeah, everyone's going to get a chance to see it. Absolutely. That's why I'm here.
I just wanted to point out that name thing because that's what stood out to me yesterday was why couldn't we make that connection? But there's a very good explanation as to why that was not done. And the names were similar, but not the same.
Thank you.
That's Mayor Protem Peck.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief. It's a very sad situation. As a mother, I can't imagine not knowing where my child is. But also, as a mother, I can't imagine using somebody else's child to disparage HPD and for media attention. I appreciate HPD's work, the professionalism of the officers that went out to the scene, that put in all of the effort trying to find him and working with him. This did occur in my district, so I am happy to continue to, you know, any support that they need, we will provide that. But again, I want to thank HPD for everything that you do each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I appreciate you being here and sharing these words and the timeline. I'm looking forward to watching the video as well. I think it's, it's definitely well noted that we're in some complex and sensitive times at the moment. The mayor spoke to the LGBTQ community as well. And as temperature continues to heighten, right? I think it's important for opportunities like this to continue to happen. I know this could be exhausting to try and explain every situation, Chief, but I think we need to get ahead of these, these stories a lot, a lot faster. Because folks are scared, quite frankly. You know, folks are, are scared of, you know, a traffic stop turning into a nice call, turn into deportation. And I feel, I felt it already. My neighbor, quite frankly, has been picked up and deported. So the more that we can get ahead of these conversations, not allowing for any, any, and I don't want to say misinformation because I want to see for myself as well, but not allowing for these, these situations to get the full transparency that it deserves, folks will continue to be scared in our city. Folks that look like me, folks that look like my mom. I appreciate the work you're doing and the work that all HPD officers are doing. My challenge, my, to you, and I appreciate, again, the work that you're doing, is how do we get ahead of these conversations? How do we make sure that we're holding other folks accountable to what they're saying as well? I don't expect that we have you showing up every council meeting to do these kind of debriefs. But the priority should be the safety of everyone. And I know that y'all, y'all are doing that as well. Just want to say thank you to the officers that were there. Thank you for your work. I appreciate Councilwoman Peck continuing to follow up. And I'm here to also be supportive in whatever way I can.
Councilman, we don't, we don't live in the shadows. This office is community facing. We're at every meeting that you have, we show up, I show up. And the mayor won't admit it, but sometimes it's a seven-day-a-week job. And it's a grind, right? But because it's passion-driven, we want to be responsive to the community and solution-driven, not tell people half-truths. The truth is, this is the times that we're in. And the truth is that this office has to follow the law, and will continue to follow the law. So I appreciate the connection that we have because it is a difficult time, a different time. And this isn't going to go away anytime soon, right? So we are focused as an organization to provide the very best services. We track twice a week in the office with these concerns. It takes up a lot of time for us because it's important. It's important to the good pastor. It's important to the mayor, obviously, who is out with us a lot. And it's important to you, to your family, my family. It's very important that we, as an organization, get it right and do our very best to make sure that the community... I can assure you, people are still calling us. This lady is a perfect example. She called us, we responded. You know, so, and that's happening all over the community every single day. And if you don't know, I'm sure you do, this community speaks 80 different languages, right? So that, it's not just Spanish-speaking people that are going through these stresses. It's, it's, it's everywhere in our community, different languages. Thank you for your comments, and thank you for all you do for us.
All right. And we want to dive a little bit deeper. And I'm really excited because right now, we do have an autism specialist. I mean, you could, his title really spans to a lot of things. I want to introduce you to Chris Diaz. Thank you so much for being here.
Hello, thank you.
And you've been with law enforcement. You've done so much. And I was just talking to you about specifically this case when it comes to 15-year-old Emmanuel. So we were listening to Chief Noe Diaz, and he's talking about what body camera video showed, what they did. What is the training that is provided to law enforcement officers when it comes to contacting and being in contact with someone who might or might not have autism?
Well, autism is a neurodevelopmental disability focusing on social skills, repetitive patterns of behavior and communication, whether communication is limited or no communication at all. I, I know that law enforcement is taught. I actually teach over at the Harris County Sheriff's Office Academy. I provide the autism portion when I'm allowed to go ahead and attend and teach. And, and, and law enforcement does get training on autism. And it's important for us law enforcement officers, or I was former, I was former first responder, and I was a federal agent for 22 years, to, to know that you don't rise to the occasion, you fall back on your training. And training is incredibly important. And not just training, you need to have updated training and continual training with respect to autism. Information is constantly changing.
And one thing that Chief Diaz says was there was nothing like a wristband or nothing in his clothing. I mean, is that something that is taught to look for?
Anytime you're in contact with somebody as a law enforcement officer, you want to be able to identify that person to the best of your ability. And again, this case is a case study of that law enforcement does need to continue training with regards to autism, get more in-depth. But also, as a case study, as parents, that parents, we as parents have a responsibility to be proactive for the betterment of our child. If your child has limited verbal communication, yes, a little card in their wallet, if they will even allow a wallet in their pocket for sensory issues, with their name, the name of a caregiver, a telephone number. So when an officer does come in contact with them, they would come across that. Or God forbid, there's ever a car accident, and you, as the caregiver, are incapacitated, and the child is in the backseat. There are things that we can do as parents to ensure that our first responders can do the best that they can to serve you.
The question right now is whether or not he is autistic and on the spectrum, the way that the mother is saying he's nonverbal. But then police officers are saying he did speak. He spoke in Spanish, but he was able to communicate. What do you think the disparity is there?
I'd have to actually speak with him to be able to understand and also speak with the mother. Just because you're on the autism spectrum doesn't mean you can't communicate, that you can't socialize in society. There are many factors and subcategories within each category that I described about behaviors. You just don't know until you're dealing with them. I would recommend you would have the ability to have a psychiatrist who's up to date on the current study of autism. Maybe have them do an evaluation to see if they're autistic or not. Or someone within the AB, Applied Behavioral Analysis Community, ABA clinics, which is the gold standard of therapy that I'm aware of as an autism parent. Go give, assist the police and give an evaluation. I think that's important, and that's reasonable and feasible.
So in a situation like this, would you have someone come and evaluate? Is there someone on standby? Or is it really what the police officer at the time is, with their knowledge, able to do?
Unfortunately, right now, and I don't know the departmental policies that are in place, whether it be HPD or even the Sheriff's Office or Constables, you have to follow your department's procedures. And again, you fall back on your training and the information that's provided to you. And then you have to apply what you're trained to be able to determine if this person is autistic. And autism is a spectrum. And I have the, the blessing of being in the community, and I see the wide array of that spectrum. Sometimes officers only meet one person on the spectrum. And as they say, if you've met one person on the spectrum, congratulations, you've only met one person on the spectrum.
And when it comes to the policies, do you think there needs to be some improvement when you are going to these police departments or fire departments and training?
To be honest, I am thrilled that police and fire and rescue are open-minded and want this type of training. They want the training. There is training occurring every week with regards to autism. I'm just happy that I get invited to tell my story about my child and my experiences. And I also incorporate, it isn't just about autism, it's about the caregiver and the stressors that the caregivers have to deal with on a daily basis. And I think it's important for those who are first responders, have that understanding so that they're aware of how to communicate with the caregivers. Because to us, we're always in the red, as they say. And we don't have the opportunity to decompress. And I think it's important that they know that. So when we are talking with first responders, that they have that perspective.
And I was going to ask about your perspective with your own son in just a second, but I first wanted to ask you, is it possible, not saying in this scenario, but with law enforcement, where they may encounter someone who says that they have autism or something else, just to get away with something? And they have to, not saying that that's happening in this case, but they're using that as a sort of tool to try to get away or try to get leniency in some regard?
That's an interesting question. Never been asked that. I, you go fall back on your training. You also have the understanding of what's occurring. For example, if someone tried to commit a crime, and people don't just stumble upon overt acts. And I would hope that time is taken. In this case, I, I heard that detectives sat for, for multiple hours communicating with, with this young juvenile, and they were able to glean information from that. And I would hope that the officers dealing with someone who's claiming they're autistic, that they are able to do the same, glean information.
I was going to say that that thought derives from in cases where you have people saying that they're insane or they're mentally incapable if they've murdered somebody or done something awful like that, and then you're having to prove that. So I just wondered if that was something that ever plays into factor whenever someone is, I guess, addressed by law enforcement.
Well, mens rea, the criminal mindset at the time of committing a crime is always, that's, that's one of the foundations of, of as a law enforcement officer, dealing with an individual who may or may not have committed a crime. And in the event that somebody is charged, I'm not an attorney, but the court does go through a process to determine if this person is, as you had mentioned, if that person is, is mentally capable to go through that judicial proceeding. And if somebody's claiming that they're autistic, that they may not have the mental capacity to sit through judicial proceeding or have had the mens rea at, at the time of the crime, that they should be evaluated as well. April 2025, the Health and Human Services this year came out and stated that autism is an epidemic. The statistic is one in 31 children have a prevalence for autism. Statistically, that is an unbelievable number. And first responders, whether they like it or not, they will be coming in contact based off those numbers with someone on the spectrum.
And speaking of someone on the spectrum, someone very special to you, your son. And tell me about your son and how you and your beautiful wife have made it your mission to spread awareness and knowledge about autism.
Well, my son is Alejandro, and he's 13. He turns 14 this December. He's nonverbal. And in the world of autism, nonverbal can mean grunts and groans to very limited speech. And my... and my son speaks very limited about his, from his wants and needs. And as I, I kid around, it's like living with, it's like being the assistant to a rock star, and when he wants a Coke, he'll yell a Coke or ice, and he'll ask, he'll yell more for more ice, he's, he's learning about volume now. But it's our mission, you know, I left federal law enforcement, 27 years of public service, and I worked very hard, and I figured I was eligible to retire, and I figured I wanted to, to work harder for my family.
That is awesome. Well, it's such a privilege to meet you, and I know-
Thank you very much.
-that you do a lot with Greg Grugan also, and so that's awesome.
Yes, I do.
And thank you and your wife for, for being here today.
Thank you.
All right, and now we want to hear from you about this whole situation, so we are asking you in our megaphone question. Hop onto Fox26Houston.com, or you can scan the QR code that you see on the top right side of your screen. Should the teenager be reunited with his mother? Yes or no? And 67% of you are saying that yes, he should. Thank you so much for joining in. Again, you can scan that QR code, go to Fox26Houston.com and be able to vote there. We'll be right back. All right, government shutdown now enters day 15, not that we're counting, but yes, we are. Another vote failed in the Senate, so let's listen in to what Republicans and Democrats are saying right now.
Thank you to my Democratic colleagues for your presence, for your unity, for your strength, and for your leadership. I'm deeply appreciative that we've been joined today by three extraordinary, hard-working American taxpayers, Heather, Jackie, and Jana, whose lives are being upended by the government shutdown and the Republican healthcare crisis, and they are here to tell their stories. Donald Trump and Republicans in Congress have shut down the government 15 days ago, and they haven't done a damn thing since to try and reopen it. House Democrats are here, reporting for duty. We are ready, we are willing, and we are able to negotiate a bipartisan spending agreement that actually meets the needs of the American people, reopen the government, and decisively address the Republican healthcare crisis. But we also need a common sense partner on the other side of the aisle. House Republicans shut the government down, then they ran out of town, and for the last three weeks, they're nowhere to be found. What more can I say? You deserve better. You deserve better. The American people deserve better. House Democrats are fighting to lower the high cost of living. House Democrats are fighting to fix our broken healthcare system, and House Democrats are fighting to clean up corruption, deliver, to deliver a country that actually works for the American people. Donald Trump promised to love and cherish Medicaid. Instead, Republicans enacted the largest cut to Medicaid in American history. That's unacceptable. Republicans falsely claim now to be the party of healthcare, but their policies are closing hospitals, nursing homes, and community-based health centers all throughout the country. That's unacceptable. The Trump administration is giving $20 billion to bail out a right-wing wannabe dictator in Argentina. But Republicans are unwilling to spend a dime to provide affordable healthcare to working-class Americans. That's unacceptable. The American people deserve better. You deserve better. It's time to extend the Affordable Care Act tax credits. It's time to prevent tens of millions of Americans from experiencing dramatically increased healthcare premiums. It's time to make sure that every single American can afford to go see a doctor when they need one. It's time to reopen the government and stand by our hard-working, patriotic federal workers, and it's time to do all of that right now. No further delay. House Republicans need to get back to work. House Democrats are in this fight for working-class Americans. We are in this fight for rural America. We are in this fight for urban America. We are in this fight for suburban America. We are in this fight for small-town America. We are in this fight for the heartland of America, and we are in this fight for black and brown communities all across America. House Democrats and Senate Democrats are in this fight until we win this fight on behalf of the American people. Cancel the cuts, lower the costs, save healthcare. It is now my honor to introduce a registered nurse and a principled healthcare provider from the great state of Connecticut, Heather Broth.
Good morning, Washington DC. My name is Heather Broth. I am a surgical nurse at a small hospital in Norwich, Connecticut, serving patients from both rural and urban communities in the surrounding area. I'm also proud to be the president of our AFT affiliate 5149 in southeastern Connecticut. As healthcare workers, we take pride in giving our patients the very best care because that's what they deserve. We've long struggled with the healthcare system constraint, which is hard as it is, but we know it could be even worse. Today, I'm here to say that we now are deeply worried that it will be much worse. We know a healthcare crisis is just around the corner because the big ugly bill law enacted by Republicans in Congress and the Trump White House, it's coming. This partisan law slashed Medicaid and allowed healthcare tax credits to expire for working families, all while funding tax breaks for billionaires. That may be great if you have money, but it's going to make life harder and more expensive for everybody else, including more than 100,000 people in Connecticut who will face higher premiums if the tax credits expire.
We're on day 15 of the Democrat government shutdown. Not a good day on Capitol Hill, not a good day across America because real Americans are feeling the pain due to the Democrats' political nonsense. And we want to specifically focus this morning on one area that's gotten a lot of attention and, and one segment of the population that, that truly deserves better treatment than the Democrats are giving them, and that is our military. Today, if it weren't for the bold leadership of President Trump, helping us protect our military, everyone needs to understand that 1.3 million active-duty service members would be missing a paycheck. They'll get their check, thankfully, because President Trump has shown strong leadership. And under his direction, the Department of War has now redirected unspent funds to ensure that our troops are taken care of, and this is while Democrats are playing political games. Last night, they played some games, they stormed my office, maybe you saw some of the video online that they themselves shared, or someone did. They berated a Capitol Police officer, screamed at him, he was just merely standing at his post, shows again their disdain for law enforcement, as we see all around the country, the Democrats and, and everyone in that, that party screaming.
All right, and we will continue to follow 15 days of the government shutdown. Now, let's go over to President Trump, he's speaking in the Oval Office with FBI Director Kash Patel.
Crushing violent crime, a top enforcement priority, and that's what they did, rounding up and arresting thousands of the most violent and dangerous criminals, and these are among the most dangerous and violent people in the world. They were allowed, in many cases, not in all cases, but in many cases, they were allowed in by a very foolish, actually stupid, open border policy, just anybody could have come in. They emptied out their jails, their prisons, their mental institutions, they emptied them into our country, and the people behind me have done an incredible job because if we didn't have that administration, it would have been so much easier. They allowed millions of people in this country that shouldn't have been allowed, including over 11,000 murderers, half of whom murdered more than one person, and many of them are gone now, or they're put in prison because we're, we don't want to have them come back, so we literally put them in our prison, which we don't want to do, but we bring them back to their countries.
All right, and we're going to keep an eye on President Trump and what all he has to say. Right now, though, we want to take you live to Polk County where the sheriff is speaking about power and everything.
Okay, somewhere around 9:15 this morning, this Polk County Sheriff's Office received a phone call in reference to an individual being, being shot here in this area, the northeast part of Polk County, up on Parish Road. Officers were able to respond in, in a pretty, you know, fast, I guess you'd say, time. Upon arrival, we did find the victim, we were able to get her, get her secured, get perimeter built up. The guys, upon arrival, started lifesaving measures, were able to apply a couple tourniquets and some, some bandages to help control the bleeding until EMS arrived. Like a lot of other agencies around here, we are, we do suffer from lack of manpower, but thank goodness for our partnerships that we have with DPS, as well as with my good friend, the sheriff over in Montgomery County, when I called and said that I need assistance, needed resources, those guys were able to send help and to increase our manpower exponentially. We were able to get the scene secure, working on trying to make for sure that the suspect was, was either there at the, at the house, or at least had him contained in the, in the local area.
What can you tell us about the condition and anything else about the victim?
At this time right now, the only thing that I can say about our victim is that she is still alive, she is still being treated. She was flown to a hospital south of here, in the south area of the city, so we are just still working at this time, working with the EMS, trying to ascertain what her condition is at this point.
Do you know what the connection was between her, if any, and the shooter?
So, so far in our investigation, what we've been able to find is that there was some type of agreement where there was a horse that was left on the property that they were helping to care for, for our victim, and at that point, something, something went downhill, and the actor became enraged and, and shot our victim.
So, from what you understood, her horse was on the suspect's property?
Yes, they would have been keeping their horse here under an agreement with the actor, and he was, I guess they were both kind of going back and forth feeding, feeding the, the animal, and somewhere in there, that was a disagreement in reference to who's feeding and the regularity of feeding the animal, and he became enraged and, at that point, shot our victim. At that point, my chief deputy, Chief Andy Lowry, was able to establish a team and was able to get it there on, at the actor's property and get it surrounded. Sheriff Doolittle from Montgomery County called upon him, he sent his SWAT team, and we were able to, our resources at that point greatly improved, where we were able to contain the area. Sergeant McAdoo, our local sergeant for the DPS here in, in Polk County, was able to reach out to their lieutenant in Lufkin, in Angelina County, and we, we were flooded with resources, and that's what it takes in order for us to help be able to keep our citizens and our communities safe, that we all work together as a unit, and we were able to get enough resources here to where we were able to kind of contain him here within the area.
Did the suspect remain on the property? Did he take off? What did it take to apprehend him?
Okay, so the subject, he did not stay on the property, he was able to get into the wooded area, just going to be, I guess you would say, south of his property, and thank goodness, we had also DPS dogs, not DPS, I'm sorry, TDC tracking dogs who, who was here on scene. We were getting ready to deploy them, and he heard the dogs, and he came out of the woods and gave himself up. And so, by the grace of God, we were able to bring this thing to a peaceful conclusion without there being anyone else injured.
What can you tell me about this suspect? Can you give anything about his age, how long he's lived here, anything?
Only thing at this point right now, and we'll close out with this because we still have a lot left to do in this investigation, 39-year-old male, and that's been in the area for a while, I don't have it, because like, again, we're now into the investigating part of this, this process. We're working now to ascertain his criminal history, you know, what, you know, what type of past he has and any issues or incidents that may have been here in Polk County and other locations that he may have resided. So, as we, we close out, I'd just like to be able to say that I am so thankful to the partnerships that we have with, like Captain Rezo with Montgomery County, Sheriff Doolittle, who sent his people sent an abundance, DPS who came out, TDC who came out and helped us, as well as we had fixed wing and helicopters in the air. We even had a citizen, Mr. Whitworth, who, who, who spotted him first and stayed, would not leave until we were able to get people down there. It takes all of that to come together for us to be able to protect our communities and our citizens. And then I would just want to say thank you to everyone, especially Mr. Whitworth, because he could have just drove away, by the grace of God, he hung in there until we got this to a peaceful conclusion.
Are you releasing a name yet?
Lee Stroll is going to be our actor.
How are you spelling that last name?
I'll have to get back with you on that.
Okay, oh, we didn't talk, you did have a shelter in place, I assume that's lifted now?
That is lifted, all of that is lifted now, the schools are able to release their kids to come into this area.
Beautiful. Does anyone else need to, or want to say anything? You good? Anything else you'd like to say, Sheriff?
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, thank you.
All right, we just brought you live the sheriff from Polk County talking about the suspect now in custody who was armed and dangerous. There was also a shelter in place for the school district there, so a very scary situation, everyone is doing okay, though. Now, let's take you back to the Oval Office where President Donald J. Trump is speaking with FBI Director Kash Patel.
Be okay, we're going to save Chicago, and I told you, and I told them, a very respected man, the head of the Union Pacific, said, "Sir, save Chicago, it can be saved." And the way he said it, it was like, can you believe it, we're trying to save Chicago? But I understood exactly what he wants, and that's what we're going to do. We're going to save all of our cities, and we're going to make them essentially crime-free, like other countries have crime-free. If you go all over the world, you go to the world, you hear Afghanistan, and you hear all these different places, our crime in certain cities is worse than anything they can even imagine. And we're not going to have that any longer. It's going to stop, and it stops right here. Cash, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I'd like to do is just highlight some of the outstanding work that the men and women of the FBI have been doing. And thanks to your brave leadership and the mandate you were given by the American people to not only defend the homeland but crush violent crime, you tasked us with our great partners at the Department of Justice and the Attorney General and the Deputy Attorney General to start making arrests and bring prosecutions and safeguard our cities. And you said it, this is just the beginning. In just seven months, I hope the media takes a look at every one of these charts because these are the best numbers for fighting crime in U.S. history, and it's only seven months in. And to do that, our vehicle to do it was Operation Summer Heat, which the FBI architected, to go after violent criminals. And in just a three-month span, you had 8,700 arrests of violent criminals. You had 2,200 firearms seized off the streets permanently to safeguard our communities. You had 421 kilograms of fentanyl seized. Just to put that in perspective, that's enough to kill 55 million Americans alone. You had 45,000 kilograms of cocaine seized. And thanks to our Department of Justice partners, you had 2,100 indictments in three months from June to September alone. Mr. President, that in and of itself would be historic for a four-year presidency. You did that in seven months because you let good cops be cops, and you partnered us with the right people, the Department of Justice, to put the handcuffs on and bring them to court and put them in prison. And if that weren't enough, when you look at the year for the entire seven-month period that we're talking about here, if you look at the past four years of the Biden administration, 16,000, 17,000, 15,000, 15,000, that's the number of arrests year over year of violent felons in this country for the Biden administration. Mr. President, in seven months, you have 28,600 arrests of violent criminals in just seven months alone because of your leadership and the dedication of the men and women at the FBI who want to go out there and do the job they were prevented from doing because that department used to be weaponized and politicized. And this is what happens when you take out the fangs of weaponization. This number is historic by every metric. 28,000 people have been arrested, violent felons alone. And then when you go over there and look at some of these charts, if you don't mind, I'll just hop over here. Look at the metrics for not just violent crimes, but the homeland. Mr. President, during your administration, the FBI has found and located 5,400 children. That is a 30% increase year-to-date over the last administration. Violent crimes against children arrest alone are up 10%. Gang arrests are up 210% in the last seven months alone. And transnational organized crime, which Stephen Miller has been a great partner in, is up over 12% alone. These numbers are historic just as a snapshot. But just so people don't think we're focusing on violent crime alone, the National Security Mission, Mr. President, your leadership has never been stronger. We have gone after espionage activities against our main counterparts in China, Russia, and Iran. In China alone, we've had over a 50% increase in espionage arrests alone in prosecutions. In Iran, we have had a 50% increase, again, in espionage cases. And in Russia, we've had a 33% increase in espionage cases alone. When it comes to counterterrorism, year-to-date, we have 125 arrests this year versus 100 last year, year-to-date alone. And when it comes to the cybercriminal activities, which are some of the largest enterprises plaguing everyday Americans, we at the FBI have put out a mission to go after cybercriminals like never before. Last year, they had in total 191. This year, you already have 252 arrests, 52 arrests of violent cybercriminals who are stealing from senior citizens, who are violating our children's rights and freedoms, and who are violating everyday Americans. These programs are record. And some of the, two of the things I'll finish with that I'm most proud of, Mr. President, this FBI, fentanyl. As you know, it's a scourge that is killing our youth, 100,000 plus a year. To date, the FBI has seized 1,900 kilograms of fentanyl. That's enough lethal doses to kill 127 million Americans alone, to date. And if that weren't enough, Mr. President, you said, "We have to go after the worst of the worst." And you empowered our Department of Justice, our Attorney General, Deputy Attorney General, and the Deputy Director at the FBI, led the charge, not just on Summer Heat, but he also led the charge in the FBI's 10 Most Wanted Fugitives. These people have been on the run for years. And in seven months, you captured not one, not two, not three, but four of the FBI's most top 10 fugitives, four. And just to put that in perspective, Mr. President, the Biden administration captured four in all of four years. You're on seven, and we're going to get to 10. We're going to get to 10 of 10. This includes a lady who murdered her six-year-old handicapped child and fled to India. We got her in two months. This includes a narco trafficker. This includes a sex trafficker. This includes another first-degree murderer and gangbanger. These people were on the run because of the prior administration's reckless policies that destroyed our communities. And you came in and with a mandate said, "Go after the worst of the worst." This is just the beginning. This is what happens when you let good cops be good cops at the FBI. Mr. President, I just want to thank you for your incredible leadership, our brave partnership with prosecutors who know how to bring cases and make sure these arrests stick. And that's what the Attorney General and the Deputy Attorney General have led the charge across this country, because arrests without prosecutions are meaningless. We are deterring criminals from doing this activity. We are preventing criminals from coming into America, and we are absolutely crushing violent crime like never before and defending this homeland, sir. And not to mention, I almost forgot this one, it took you, sir, two weeks to get the Abbey Gate bomber. Joe Biden had four years to look for him. You got him in two weeks, thanks to the interagency effort by the FBI and the CIA, went to Pakistan, and now 13 brave warriors who were senselessly murdered because of disastrous Afghanistan withdrawal. They have justice, their families have a peace of mind, and we're going to continue to find the others, Mr. President. On behalf of the FBI, sir, I just want to thank you.
Thank you very much. Great job. Very good. President?
President Trump, the men and women of law enforcement say two things to me repeatedly. First, you have taken the handcuffs off them and let them do their jobs, and you let cops be cops. That's why all this is happening. The director, the deputy director are working around the clock. All of these great men and women in the FBI, they have, think about, they have families at home, and they are working during a government shutdown right now. Many of them have small children. Many of them, I was talking to an agent this morning, many of them have babies at home, and they are working around the clock to not only keep our country but our world safe. And that's what Operation Summer Heat did. Thank you, Director, and to the Deputy Director, for everything you did on behalf of the Department of Justice, and you're going to continue to keep doing. And they set the stage for what we're doing in Memphis. You're going to hear a lot more about that, our joint task force next week, but they set the stage for Memphis. And last night alone in Memphis, there were almost 70 arrests, there were 12 guns seized, and there was a 70-year-old man arrested as a result of our operation in Memphis who raped a child under the age of three. That one case makes everything we're doing worthwhile. So thank you all for being here on behalf of both of us. Thank you, President Trump.
Thank you, Doug. You want to say something?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. So this is a great day, and I think there's stats that the Director talked about which are important. But I want to give two examples of what Summer Heat has done that actually will apply, hopefully, to everybody in this room. The first is, for over four years during the last administration, there was a hotel in a town, the middle of a town in Alaska, that was being run as a drug den. There were over 1,000 calls to 911 over a four, four-and-a-half-year period. There were multiple violent crimes, drug dealers, overdoses, and murders at this one hotel, ruining a community. Summer Heat went in there, not only arrested all the participants that were controlling the hotel, but seized the hotel. And so that's one example of what Summer Heat means to everyday Americans that just want to live in peace. The second example is a large narcotics trafficking group that was selling fentanyl in the state of Washington. They were shipping fentanyl using commercial aircraft, putting fentanyl pills and powder onto, in suitcases, flying them from the southwest border, mostly Arizona, all the way to Washington. It had been going on for an extremely long time, and the entire organization was arrested. And I say those two examples because it's easy to look at the board and see 1,000 arrests. How much different is our communities now compared to the past four years? But there's actual life examples. Every one of these arrests means that our streets are safer, and that's because of the work of this administration, of President Trump and Director Patel. So I will tell you, Attorney General Bondi and I are together every day with Director Patel, figuring out ways that we can continue or do this work. And it's not going to stop, like the Attorney General said, and like the President said, this is just the beginning, or phase one, or a start, whatever you want to say, but it will continue on. So thank you, Mr. President, and thank you very much, Director Patel.
And, Mr. President, just one last thank you from the men and women at the FBI. You found a way to get these individuals paid during a government shutdown, our 1811 agents. On behalf of the FBI, it's a great debt that we owe you, sir. They're now allowed to pay for their families, so thank you.
And the military. Good. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Any questions, please? Brian, go ahead.
First of all, I know the feedback I'm getting from the American people, and they want to say, "Thank you. Law and order is not an option in this country. It's a mandate." So I know the American people, thank you for that. In terms of the guns that have been taken off the street, do you have a number of how many guns were taken away from someone that had a prior felony or a previous crime that perhaps we can prosecute that? Because I know that wasn't the case of Joe Biden.
We don't take guns off the streets of people that are allowed to have guns. So every gun that we're taking off the street, it's because it belongs to somebody who is not allowed to have it. Could be a felon, could be somebody who hears illegally. There's all sorts of conditions. But if there's a gun taken off the streets by the FBI, it's because the person who has it is not allowed to. It's not somebody who's lawfully allowed to have it. So every single one of those guns were taken off of people that aren't allowed to have it.
And not including the FBI, all of the other agencies. ATF alone, since January 20th, has removed over 25,000 illegal guns off our streets just since President Trump's been in office.
Mr. President, if I could follow up on that. Could there be any further conversation to have national concealed carry applied to our actual DC? Like if you had a driving license in Texas and you had a permit, of course, you can drive.
Well, as you know, they've been talking about that for a long time. It's an interesting question. A lot of people feel strongly both ways, but we are talking about that, Brian. Thank you.
Mr. President, on Venezuelan votes, I want to ask you, why not have the Coast Guard stop them, which it is empowered by law to do? You know, this way you can confirm who's on the boat and ensure that they're doing what you suspect.
Because we've been doing that for 30 years, and it has been totally ineffective. They have faster boats. Some of these boats are seriously, I mean, they're world-class speedboats, but they're not faster than missiles. But we've been trying to do that for years, and so much of the drugs, 25%, 30% would come in through the seas. Right now, we have, I would say, none coming in through the seas. In fact, I don't know about the fishing industry, if you want to go fishing, because a lot of people aren't deciding to even go fishing. We've almost totally stopped it by sea. Now we'll stop it by land.
What's the next step?
But it never worked. It never worked when, you know, when you did it in a very politically correct manner.
What's the next step in this war on cartels? And are you considering options? Are you considering strikes on land?
Well, I don't want to tell you exactly, but we are certainly looking at land now because we've got the sea very well under control. We've had a couple of days where there isn't a boat to be found. And that, I view that as a good thing, not a bad thing. But we had tremendous amounts coming in by boats, by very expensive boats. You know, they have a lot of money, very fast, very expensive boats that were pretty big. And the way you look at it is, every boat that we knock out, we save 25,000 American lives. So every time you see a boat and you feel badly, you say, "Wow, that's rough." It is rough, but if you lose three people and save 25,000 people, these are people that are killing our population. Every boat is saving 25,000 lives, and you can see it. The boats get hit, and you see that fentanyl all over the ocean. It's like floating in bags. It's all over the place. And it's a tremendous, we're saving tremendous amounts of lives.
Mr. President, on that issue? I know you've talked about, I have a question for you, and then I also have a question for Director Patel. I know you talked about having some distaste for Boston recently. Is this one of the cities that you might be looking into? And can you give us a hint about other cities that you might be?
You're saying, for where? For where?
For Boston.
Yeah, well, Boston has a bad mayor who at least is a reasonable IQ person. You know, most of them are low IQ, but, and they're so bad. I mean, what's going on in Chicago is just, you'd think the guy would say, "Hey, look, we have a problem, Mr. President. Could you come in and straighten it out? I could have that, we could have that done in a month if we had their cooperation." It's going to be done anyway, but we could have it done in a month. Yeah, Boston, she's got four areas that are, you know, wrong. And, you know, somebody said, "Would we take, would we think about taking the World Cup away from Boston if they don't straighten it out?" And the answer is yes, we have the right to do that with FIFA. So if we think that LA is going to be bad, or we think, that applies a little bit to the Olympics, too, but we'll talk about FIFA first. You know, FIFA is very hot. If we think there's any reason that, whether it's Boston or anywhere else, that they're not doing their job, we're going to take that, those World Cup games and move them someplace else.
Thank you. And then Director Patel, there's been so many conspiracy theories swirling around about the assassination of Charlie Kirk. Do you have any updates for us, especially in light of all the online content that everyone's been talking about?
The only thing we deal with at the FBI and the Department of Justice is facts. And we delivered at record speed a manhunt to capture Charlie Kirk's alleged assassination in 33 hours. And if you put that in perspective, Luigi Mangione, with a Boston bomber, they took them five days, and a police officer lost their life in their manhunt. We are running out absolutely every single lead, and the best thing we can do to honor my friend Charlie Kirk's life is to make sure that everyone involved is prosecuted to the full extent of the law. And that's what we're focused on, investigating the facts, not trading in conspiracy theories.
Okay.
Mr. President, thank you so much.
Thank you.
In light of China's export curves on rare earths, do you view India as a reliable partner going forward? And are you planning to meet Prime Minister Modi in Malaysia? Are you open to talks in terms of?
Yeah, sure. He's a friend of mine. We have a great relationship. He just said that two days ago, as you know. We have a great relationship. No, we were not happy with him buying oil from Russia, because that lets Russia continue on with this ridiculous war where they've lost a million and a half people. By the way, Russia's lost a million and a half people, soldiers mostly. This is a war that should have never started, but it's a war that Russia should have won in the first week, and they're going into the fourth year. And I want to see it stop. So I was not happy that India was buying oil. And he assured me today that they will not be buying oil from Russia. That's a big stop. Now I got to get China to do the same thing. You know, that is relatively easy compared to what we just did over the last week in the Middle East. Middle East was 3,000 years, and we got it done. This is three years, and I think we'll get it done. I think that Putin, President Putin, I think is going to, I think he wants to get it done. We'll see. There's a great animosity between him and Zelensky, you probably have noticed, right? And it's, I think it's hurting the process. Yeah, yeah, please.
Mr. President, thank you. Curious, why did you authorize the CIA to go into Venezuela? And is there more information you can share about these strikes on the alleged?
Well, I can't do that, but I authorized for two reasons, really. Number one, they have emptied their prisons into the United States of America. They came in through the, well, they came in through the border. They came in because we had an open border policy. And as soon as I heard that, I said, "A lot of these countries," they're not the only country, but they're the worst abuser. And they've entered there, they've allowed thousands and thousands of prisoners, mental institution, people from mental institutions, insane asylums, emptied out into the United States. We're bringing them back, but that's a really bad, and they did it at a level that probably not, many, many countries have done it, but not like Venezuela. They were down and dirty. And the other thing of drugs, we have a lot of drugs coming in from Venezuela. And a lot of the Venezuelan drugs come in through the sea, so you get to see that. But we're going to stop them by land also.
Does the CIA have authority to take out Maduro?
Oh, I don't want to answer a question like that. That's a ridiculous question for me to be given. Not really a ridiculous question, but wouldn't it be a ridiculous question for me to answer? But I think Venezuela's feeling heat, but I think a lot of other countries are feeling heat, too. We're not going to let this country, our country, be ruined because other people want to drop, as you say, their worst. They have given us their worst. They've loaded up our country with prisoners, with mentally ill people that are seriously ill, criminally ill, and we're not going to take it. And so, I mean, it's just one of those things. And I can tell you, we've taken care of the sea. There's nobody, and we're watching. We're watching. And if we see it, we'll save it. Yeah, please.
On the ships, though, sir, there are Republicans and Democrats up on the Hill concerned that in the briefings they've gotten about those attacks, they're not necessarily getting information about who was on them and what exactly was on those ships. Can you ensure that at least?
Well, but they are given information that they were loaded up with drugs, and that's the thing that matters. When they're loaded up with drugs, they're fair game. And every one of those ships were, they're not ships, they're boats, they're speedboats. They're extremely fast, record-setting-type speedboats. They cost a lot of money, and they have a lot of money because they're drug sellers. But they know one thing, and they all have the same thing in common. There's drug dust. They call it drug dust. They call it fentanyl dust. All over the boat after those bombs go off, and you can take along.
Attack them, though, that they're?
We know. We know before, we know when they go out. We know, we have much information about each boat that goes out. Deep, strong information. Yeah, please.
Sir, you're going to have Vladimir Zelensky here this week. What is your message at this stage of the war for him? And shy of Tomahawks?
To who is it?
For Zelensky. And shy of Tomahawks for Ukraine. Are you considering other options, and will you speak with Vladimir Putin?
No, we're looking at other options. We are. President Zelensky's coming in. I'm not a fan of the war. I'm not a fan of the way it started. It should have never happened. It wouldn't have started if I were president. The election was rigged, and because of that, we lost, a lot of lives have been lost because of that war. Not American lives, but if I can save a lot of lives, that's why I'm in it. I want to save lives. I've had eight wars. The Prime Minister of Pakistan got up the other day, said so beautifully, says, "You saved millions of lives." He told that to a group of people right in this office. He said, "The president saved millions of lives." And I think what he's referring to is the fact that that would have been with India and nuclear war. That was getting very close. You know, seven planes, they don't talk about it, but seven aircraft were shot down. In fact, we have the new ambassador to India right here. They're well represented. You better represent us, not them, okay? But Sergio's going to do a great job. He's going to do a great job. But no, we'll be talking about the war with him, and we'll be talking about, I mean, they want to go offensive. I'll make a determination on that, but they would like to go offensive. You know that. And we'll have to make a determination.
I have a question given to the FBI Director and Attorney General here today. Jim Jordan has asked Jack Smith to appear in front of the House Judiciary.
You mean deranged Jack? He's a deranged individual, yeah?
He is asking.
Well, they should. I'm surprised it takes so long. You know, we're talking about violent crime. What about the crime against a political opponent? That's what we have to talk about too.
Mr. President, we'd like to understand the full extent to which the Biden-Harris Justice Department weaponized federal law enforcement. What do you think the committee will find out?
I think it was the worst weaponization of a political opponent in the history of the world, let alone this country. And I hope that everybody's, you know, they're involved in it. I'm not, I'm the one that had to suffer through it and ultimately win. But what they did was criminal. Deranged Jack Smith, in my opinion, is a criminal. And I noticed his interviewer was, I think that was Weissman, and I hope they're going to look into Weissman too. Weissman's a bad guy, and he had somebody in Lisa, who was his puppet, worked in the office, really as the top person. And I think that she should be looked at very strongly. There was tremendous criminal activity having to do with. If we don't have fair elections in this country, we're not going to have a country. And I've said it from the beginning, fair elections and borders. And we need also fair press because if you don't have fair press, it's very tough. And we've got the strongest border of anybody, nobody has a border. We have a border where the numbers just came out again. You saw zero people came in illegally. Now, we do take people into our country legally, but zero people. But, you know, you're talking about a different subject. You're talking about political crime. They have committed massive political crime. I hope they're looking at Shifty Schiff. I hope they're looking at all these people. And I'm allowed to find out. I'm allowed to, you know, I'm, in theory, the chief law enforcement officer, but I have a very good, talented group. This is about something else, but I hope they're looking at political crime because there's never been so much political crime against a political opponent as what I had to go through. They raided my house in Florida. It was an illegal raid. I have a lawsuit that was doing very well, and when I became president, I said, "I'm sort of suing myself." I don't know, how do you settle the lawsuit? I'll say, "Give me X dollars," right? And I don't know what to do with the lawsuit. It's a great lawsuit, and now I won. It sort of looks bad. I'm suing myself, right? So, I don't know. But that was a lawsuit that was very strong, very powerful. They raided illegally my house in Florida, Mar-a-Lago. They went through the drawers of my young son. They went through all of the cabinets and drawers of the first lady. She walked in, she said, "Wow, what happened?" Because she's very meticulous, and this wasn't so meticulous as she looked into the drawers, and she saw everything a mess. It's, what they did against a person that just got out of office. And then you look at these corrupt people. You look at Hunter Biden, you look at the signature, as an example, the Ourope. I just signed so many different things, an admiral, a four-star general. I'm signing them left and right, the commissions. And by the way, I want to compliment John Thune and also Mike, our great speaker. But John Thune, all of a sudden, I'm getting these things by the hundreds. I was getting one every two weeks. It would have been four years before you got them in wars. You would have had some that didn't even get in, all because of Democrat obstruction. So, John Thune did a great job. I signed, I must have signed 200 into the administration. We're just about caught up. It's amazing. And so, compliments to John. He had to do some things that were very tough to do, that he didn't want to do, but he was forced to do it by the Democrats. And as far as the shutdown's concerned, this is a Democrat-Schumer shutdown. And he's trying to do it to get relevance back into the party because he's a loser. I've known him all his life. He's always been sort of a loser, but an intelligent one. But I think he's losing IQ points with time. I think that happens. I hope it hasn't happened with me. I know if it did, you guys will let me know about it very quickly.
One question on violent crimes, sir. Here in DC, a judge has given the two teenagers that beat up ex-Doge staffer Big Balls probation in no jail time. Is this justice?
Jeanine Pirro is doing a fantastic job, and she is beside herself because you have these radical-left judges that, they beat the hell out of this guy. And it was many people against this one guy who was really trying to protect his girlfriend. He didn't want his, they hooded over the door because, but they really beat him up badly. That just happened, right?
Yes.
Wow, that's terrible. I think the judge should be ashamed of himself. That's a big problem. You know, they can do their job, and then they go into a court, and the people are protected by these, I don't know where they come from. Where do these people come from? Where do the judges come from? I want to compliment on behalf of Pam and Todd and all of us because, Cash, I think that Jeanine has done a fantastic job. And the case I heard was like flawless. It's a flawless case. They have them on tape. They have everything. And then a judge gives them a little probation. These are, these are rough guys, and they're young, and if that happens, they're going to grow up. They're going to be real bad. They're going to cause, they're going to cause a lot of problems. Yeah, please, go ahead.
So, Sergio Agora has just gotten back from India. What were the conversations like with Prime Minister Modi and the other?
I think they were great. He reported to me that you're great, he's a great man, you know? Modi is a great man, that he loves Trump. Now, I don't know if the word "love," I don't want you to take that any different. I don't want to destroy his political career, okay? But you have to understand, I've watched India for years. It's an incredible country. And every single year, you'd have a new leader. I mean, some would be in there for a few months, and this was year after year after year. And my friend has been there now for a long time, and he is, and he's assured me, "There will be no oil purchased from Russia." I don't know, maybe that's a breaking story. Can I say that, would you say? There will be no oil. He's not buying his oil from Russia. It started. You know, you can't do it immediately. It's a little bit of a process, but the process is going to be over with soon. And all we want from President Putin is stop this, stop killing Ukrainians, and stop killing Russians because he's killing a lot of Russians. Again, it doesn't make him look good. It's a war that he should have won in one week, and he's now going into his fourth year. That does not look, make this big so-called war machine look good. But he could make a settlement. We're willing to settle. I thought we had a deal. The hatred of the two leaders is very, it's an obstacle. It's an obstacle. There's no question about it. But I thought we had a deal two months ago. Who would think I created peace in the Middle East and can't get the two guys to settle? But I think we'll get them. But if India doesn't buy oil, it makes it much easier, and they're not going to buy it. They assured me they will, within a short period of time, they will not be buying oil from Russia. And they'll go back to Russia after the war's over. Jennifer?
On the shutdown, sir, are FBI officials being paid right now? Are all the FBI employees being paid, and are all the?
Well, that's what I understand. I hope so.
Thanks to you, everybody. Thanks to you for your presence. The special agents at the FBI are going to receive their paychecks.
Got a lot of people paid, actually.
And the people that?
We got the people that we want paid, paid, okay? And we want the FBI paid. We want the military paid. We got the people that we want paid. And I'll tell you, the Democrats, they don't talk about this. You know, we're getting rid of programs that we didn't like, but that were negotiated in, but that we didn't like. We're terminating those programs, and they're going to be terminated on a permanent basis. And it's thousands of people, and it's, you know, billions of dollars. We're getting rid of a lot of things that we never wanted because of the fact that they made this stupid move, and they don't want to talk about it. You know, they have their day coming up. I hear very few people are going to be there, by the way. But they have their day coming up, and they want to have their day in the sun. But they should really make a deal. So, what we're doing, I mean, they call him Darth Vader, but he's actually a very nice person, Russell Vought. But Russell Vought is, is really terminating tremendous numbers of Democrat projects. There's not only jobs, I mean, the project in Manhattan, the project in New York, it's billions and billions of dollars that Schumer has worked 20 years to get. It's terminated. Tell them it's terminated, Jennifer. All right.
On Hamas, sir, what is your understanding of the pace of returning the deceased hostages? Are you pleased?
Well, they're looking for them, absolutely. They're looking. So, we have the living hostages all back. They returned some more today. It's a gruesome process. I almost hate to talk about it, so, but they're digging. They're actually digging. There are areas where they're digging, and they're finding a lot of bodies. Then they have to separate the bodies. You wouldn't believe this. This is, and some of those bodies have been in there a long time, and some of them are under rubble. They have to remove rubble. But there are graves, and some are, some are in tunnels that are, that died in tunnels that are way down under the earth. And the tunnels are like three feet, can you believe it, three feet high? They lived like this for a long period of time. It's a horrible, it's a horrible atrocity. At the same time, we, meaning Israel, but I knew everything they were doing pretty much, I knew most of the things they were doing, but they've killed probably 70,000 of these people, Hamas. And I said, "It's time now." So, we'll see what happens. We'll also see what happens. Your next question's going to be the weapons. We want the weapons to be given up, sacrificed, and they've agreed to do it. Now, they have to do it, and if they don't do it, we'll do it.
We had the head of CENTCOM today suggest that Hamas needs to hurry up and disarm and follow your comprehensive plan. That it was the head of CENTCOM saying that. Is that not a signal to Hamas, to the rest of the world, that at some point, the US military may be more directly engaged?
We won't need the US military.
So, then why have?
We won't need it. Well, because we're very much involved, and if we weren't involved, there wouldn't be peace. If we didn't destroy the nuclear capability of Iran, that deal would have never happened for two reasons. The Arab nations would not have felt bold enough to do it because you have a very powerful, at that time, Iran is not powerful anymore, between what we, what Israel and us did, because, you know, the attack was, was, if you look at it, we helped them very much. They will be the first to tell you, including shooting down thousands of drones that were coming into Israel. You know, we shot them down. We were shooting them down like it was target practice, but we shot down thousands of drones and missiles also going into Israel. But between what we did to Iran that way with the, you know, conventional, we will call it, and what that, see that beautiful plane, that B-2? I noticed it on the desk. I always thought it was beautiful, but I never understood it. Now, I understand it. It took in hundreds of thousands of bombs in the form of two, but hundreds of thousands of pounds of bombs, and every single bomb hit perfectly. Then they sent Tomahawks in. They sent 30 Tomahawks on top of it, and that was totally, you know, CNN said, "Well, maybe it wasn't as bad as, you know, as Trump said," because I said obliterated. Obliterated is not a strong enough word, actually. And you saw the Atomic Energy Commission came out and said, "The word obliteration is very, very..." Think of it. They came in under potential fire. They entered Iran airspace late at night, in the dark, no moon. The moon was low for a reason, was the time we picked it. Couldn't see anything, and they hit every target, and they weren't hit. Nobody saw that plane. That plane is stealth. Nobody saw it. The problem with that is, it may be stealth today, but tomorrow, it won't be. And we just ordered about 20 brand-new B-2 bombers. It's unbelievable as a weapon. I know Putin, when I was riding with him in Alaska, we passed a lot of them, and he said, "That really did the trick." I said, "Yeah, it did. It's amazing, the flying wing."
But you still see no reason for the US military to get involved in Gaza?
No, I don't see that, no. I think we're going to handle it very well. We'll be helping Israel. But we have other countries that are now, you know, we signed, many, many countries signed, and many of those countries relatively have very strong military powers. And Hamas has no support. See, Hamas had the support of Iran, and now Iran says, "Don't get us involved." The last time they got them involved, didn't work out too well. So, they used to have the support of Iran. Today, Iran is, they're trying to survive, you know? When I heard the reports two weeks ago, "Iran's looking to build a nuclear weapon," I said, "Don't worry about it. They got a lot of things they want to do before nuclear weapons." I said, "The last thing they want to do is a nuclear weapon." It didn't work out. And if they did a nuclear weapon before they got even close, that site would be attacked, and it would be wiped out.
Mr. President, you're meeting with President Xi in a few weeks. If you can't come to an agreement or a deal at that meeting, are we in for a sustained trade war with China?
Well, you're in one now. Look, we have 100% tariff. If we didn't have tariffs, we would be exposed as being a nothing. We would have no defense. You know, they've used tariffs on us, but we've never had anybody sitting in that chair that felt the need to do it, and they've allowed us to be $37 trillion in debt, et cetera, et cetera. We, tariffs are a very important tool.
All right, that'll wrap up our Houston live and local coverage. Stay tuned. You got the Carolina and Rashi Show coming up next.
Did not know that.
She just asked me my middle name. You didn't know that?
I didn't know it was Bridgette.
Yeah.
But you do look like a Bridgette.
Right? And I always said that it was, it would have been nice to be named Bridgette because my dad's name is Bob. So all of his golf stuff is, well, it was at the time, B.C. Like he would get all his golf balls labeled B.C., his hats because he's a PGA pro. So like the titleist stuff, everything would be labeled. So when I started using all that stuff, he started transitioning it into just Collins. But I was like, had I been B.C., it all could have worked.
Also, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, our director.
Do you know that you're on the air?
This is how we talk to our friends, Robert, and we should get you on the air too, Robert.
Yeah, Robert, there's a camera back there now Bill used. We'd love to see. I don't know.
Robert is so funny. He's hilarious.
He's so good. He's so like, he picks up the errors and little things, so creative, so good. You should definitely be on here.
But he's like, what I love is that he's so calm.
We should make every single person who works in the back come sit in the hot seat one day for like a quick one-segment interview, like what do you do?
It's not even that big of a deal.
Yeah.
It'll be so fun.
How do you like working with us?
And you have to say you like it.
So anyway, yeah, my middle name's Bridgette, but I think I'm going to drop Bridgette when I get married.
And do what?
Caroline Collins Chaiesta.
That's a good idea.
Sad.
Yeah.
But maybe I can name my future daughter Bridgette.
Bridgette, it's, I love that name. I think Bridgette's so good.
I've always loved it. I've always loved that nickname.
Yes, I've never had a middle name, so I was always Rashi that.
Oh, you don't do that in India?
No, it's not in India. It's not in Indian thing. So my family's from India, but like me being born here, it was just like, they don't do that in India, so ridiculous.
No, her mom is amazing. It is so incredible to just be around your mom and think, oh my gosh, she literally came here from India and then had you two girls.
Yes, no, it's crazy.
With your dad. Got married, came over here. It's incredible.
Yeah, arranged marriage, it's crazy. But okay, so yeah, they just decided not to give us middle names. It's crazy. Yeah, I mean, it's not really common in the Indian culture, but usually you take like your dad's first name, which I wouldn't have liked that because that's just.
Your dad's first name?
Yeah, my dad's name is Raj, so it would be Raj.
Really? Even though you're a girl?
Yeah, I know.
Interesting.
So, but there's, but now like my friends who are obviously like this generation or my generation, they've named their kids like Sophie's a middle name or like, you know, given middle names. I gave my kids middle names.
Well, in the South, and a lot of people consider Houston the South, but we're not like as Southern as the places like Alabama, that these girls have like four names, like Mary Beth Susan or something. It's like crazy.
Well, I always found it, like when I first heard Mike Iskavitz, one of his twins is Anna Marie.
That's very Southern.
Right. And I was like, oh, wow, Anna Marie. Well, like we had a meteorologist too, but maybe we did that just to differentiate her from.
Oh, I think so, yeah.
Okay, well, then that's not a good example there.
No, Anna Marie, that's so pretty, though.
No, I'm not trying to say it's not. It was, it's very pretty. It's just two names. Well, is it two names or is it just one?
It's like two names. I don't know if they combine it into one or if it's two. I think it's like two names.
Well, his other daughter's name, I mean, I'm saying this because he talks about all three of his kids, but Gia is the youngest and then the twins are Anna Marie and somebody else. Yeah, anyway, but it's a short name.
Yeah.
It's a short name.
Well, I love it, I love long dramatic names like Leona, which is your daughter's name.
Thank you.
Like I really love, you know, I'm saying all the classic ones, Sophia, like just like very, like Caroline. I just, I've always loved that kind of a feel. But my sister has a very Rashi sounding name, Lexi. And I like those too. They're like attitude.
Yes, well, her name's Alexis, though, right?
Yes, Alexis.
I think Alexis is nice. But I think what you like, which is what I like too, which is like any name that you can add princess to the front of it, like just sounds good, like Princess Caroline.
Princess Leona.
Princess.
I almost feel like your name needs queen in front of it.
Stop it right now.
Queen, Rashi.
Well, this episode is airing on My Fox, or what is it called? My 20.
My 20.
My 20, there we go. Not My Fox, used to be UPN. Are we even allowed to say that? Well, I just did. But if you want to look at any of our other episodes, we're on Fox Local. I didn't even introduce myself. I'm Rashi.
I'm Caroline, and this is how we like to start our episodes, in full-on girl talk about trending topics that we think you'd be interested in. And I have an understanding that today we're talking a little bit about weddings, because typically on Wednesdays, we do a Wedding Wednesday segment. And it's become so popular, but we've kind of continued the wedding theme into other episodes.
Yes, because we just want to make sure that people are getting their fix when it comes to all things wedding and homegirls getting married.
Yes, I am.
April 25th, 2026.
The perfect date, and I'm very excited. We're full force in planning. It's like every day I come in and I sort of have a new update for Rashi, like what I did today for the wedding.
Even if it's a little thing, but I have to tell you, like, that's so normal because I love your relationship with your mom and y'all are so close. And so it's great because I know it's annoying right now, but every day you guys are talking about a big wedding.
Well, it is, but also it's been a learning curve, I think, for my mom because she's picturing more, a lot more DIY, hands-on because of how it used to be back when her generation was getting married. And now it's like you have full planners, partial planners. It's just, even if you don't, you're hiring vendors and then the vendors are showing up and they're putting the decorations up and the florists are doing. So it's not, it's not you and your mom going to like pick up the florals and setting the tables. Like that's kind of all done through either planners, vendors, whatever. The whole bachelorette party scene too, that's a big thing that I'm fully ingrained in now. I went to one over the weekend and we, Rashi commented, my water bottle.
I loved it.
She did custom water bottles for us. That is Texas, that is my initials. And this is a pretty poppin' brand, Awala. I'm sure you've seen it in your two schools. And so I thought that was a nice gift. So now I'm like, okay. I think there were six of us total on her trip. There's 17 of us total on mine, so I'm going to have to find 17 water bottles coming up for our big bash.
Well, I think it's, it can be annoying because there's like all these intricacies and also you being the eldest, so you're the first one in the family.
Yeah, and my sister's just like totally not into the whole like, I mean, she loves my fiance and she's excited for me, but this isn't like her passion, like planning bachelorette parties or weddings or anything, so.
So it's okay, we just have plenty of time and I'm blessed to be a bridesmaid, so I try to help out however I can, but.
I want it to be so fun for everybody, that's the thing.
I know it will be, and it's going to be magical. Here's one part that isn't always so magical is putting the registry together. And I know.
I was so stressed about this a couple of weeks ago, remember?
Yes.
I made her come to Crate and Barrel with me.
Well, here's something that I told you, and then there's a survey that we're talking about, which kind of backs up what I told you. When it comes to the average homeowner, they wait nearly three decades before breaking out any special occasion items like china or crystal glassware. A new survey finds about half say they've never used them because the right hosting moment just hasn't come up yet. Many say they're worried about damaging the items. The top occasions people bring out their special occasion items are holiday gatherings, anniversaries, and getting married.
This is so crazy to me. I absolutely love my mom's fine china and she would break it out usually hosting Thanksgiving, the main table. She would have the fine china out. And I actually love it so much, I almost considered not doing my registering for my own fine china until I found this china that I absolutely fell in love with.
Really?
And I registered for it.
Oh, my God, I have to see it.
Yeah, you'll, I know you'll love it.
Oh, wow.
And then you'll be like, oh, my gosh, now I need.
Now, yes. Well, I remember I was so into these gold utensils and I really wanted these gold utensils and they were really expensive. I think they were like from Anthropologie or something, I don't know. And I got them, but I've never used them.
No, wait, why didn't you break them out at Thanksgiving?
I don't know.
Yeah, you've got to do that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
So what my mom usually did growing up, when we would have, when we would host holidays, the main table would be set with the china and then there would be additional either plates or especially if we had like a big group of people, the kids, we would just eat off like plastic plates when we were younger, because kids don't care, you know?
Right, right.
But yeah, several times she's pulled out her china. I absolutely love it. It's Lennox, it's gold rim, kind of a tan color. It just goes with everything.
So pretty. Now I want to look it up for like to get some china.
So I told her, I was like, okay, even though I'm registering for china, please make sure one day Lexi or I gets this china that she has, because I really do love it.
Yeah, no, and that kind of brand and like the light, it's just so nice. And now that I think about it, we got a set. It wasn't like just ornate china or anything. We got this set. And I mean, like I'm, it's nice. It's not like, it has this like red flower on it. I don't even know why I've had it for so long, but I've had it for 12 years and I still use it every day.
So, wow, really?
Yes, it's crazy, right?
Yeah. But I think you should pull it out. It doesn't have to be like.
No, it doesn't.
A super special occasion, like it could literally be like you're having friends over for dinner or just pull it out.
Yes, it's just like, but some of my friends that are like parents now too, like we joke about this because sometimes we just have time or just we've made it to where we just have like a paper towel we use to like put our food in so we don't like do the dishes. Like you're just like, you know.
I mean, I don't even have kids and it's like, I get that.
Yeah, and so it's, I guess like just the regular role of life, but you have to be very intentional in doing all of that. So that's awesome that your mom did that. I now remember my mom doing that too. We didn't have china, we actually had gold plates that we bust out. It was gold plates and gold cups, gold, everything. And so it's usually, that's like passed down from generation to generation. So I now remember, they're called tallies, which is a big plate. And so we always had that for all of the adults. When we busted it out for like big, big occasions, so.
So like you could have your main table set for the adults and then I know like you usually have a lot of kids in your family come over, so then the kids could eat off like rice and stuff.
Right, right.
But then it's like you have this big Instagram moment of the main table.
The Instagram moment is what we need. I mean, that's what also motivates me too. I'm like, oh, you've got to get the table scape. It's all about the table scape.
The table scape, yes. I, I love that. I'm still on the hunt for a new kitchen table and I need the coffee table still. Connor needs a desk. So there's like a couple of things that we need to kind of lock in on, but we're getting there.
I think the best thing to do is instead of putting all of that stuff on your registry to try to rush things, yes. Or money or whatever, so that you have that money so that you can buy it at your, like you're calmer, you're married, you're looking at it, like, you know, so.
So far, I've been making some good improvements though at home, kind of in anticipation of like getting married and starting this like new chapter. I want my home to like feel elevated and just like ready and good for the next chapter.
Yeah, and it will be, and it already is. It's all good vibes. And you know, you step into a home sometimes and the vibes are kind of not the best, but then when you step into a home with good vibes, I believe in saging a lot.
I know, I need to get some of that.
Well, I mean, it just, I just, I don't know.
I think we need to sage around our office desks.
But where would this, we have no windows, friends.
I know. I'd be a little afraid that.
It's a dungeon.
We should have like our friends from the fire department come over and help us sage.
We do need to sage.
Like, can we have them on the show so we can go sage, sage our desks?
I mean, yeah, and it's just the newsroom. It's crazy because like the sales department has like offices and windows.
Well, I was just, Rashi and I can really feel energy and I just felt a darkness in there and so we need to, we need to go brighten that up.
Yes, or I would love to bring incense or something, you know, but then everybody.
A rosary. I have my prayers crossed.
Friends, yes.
I actually had to just say a prayer for somebody because I just felt really like negative energy.
Yeah.
So I just said a prayer and came in here and now like we're having a great time.
Yes, exactly. That's how it goes and we're so glad that you were here with us. And we will be right back. will be right back. Hi, friends.
Hi, guys. So are you a texter or caller?
Well, yeah, we're both too. I mean, but here's the thing with texting, I cannot associate with you on a pretty regular basis. If your texting is just like.
Yeah, I was just in a group message with a group of people I didn't really know. And the lack of enthusiasm was dreadful.
I mean, I'll just put it out there. There is a family member that is just, oh my God, Negative Nancy, all the time. And it's just like, you know, no exclamation marks, just doom and gloom, pity party. I mean, the queen of just negativity. So I'm like, I can't. And so I just had to, and it wasn't just the text messages. So don't think it's just that. It's just, it was a lot of other things, but it's like, you know, you have to protect your peace and someone just being negative all the time for no reason.
Yeah, or it's as if there's no exclamation emoji, nothing, you're getting one worded. I mean, Rashi and I.
Caroline's an amazing texter. That's also why we're friends because I couldn't be friends with somebody who's not texting with emotion. Yes, I mean, I don't want, I mean, of course, if you'd see our texts, some people would be like, oh my God, because there's like five exclamation marks or whatever.
But that's only when we're talking about personal life stuff or activities outside of work. When we're talking about work, we're very to the point.
Yes, it's not even a hello.
Is that okay? Yes.
So here's something that really irks me and I've talked to Daniel, who's my husband, if you are new to the show, about this because he texts this or he'll talk, he'll say this. The word sure.
Because it comes off sure.
Yes. And I've even explained it. I've said, sure, does, what does that mean? Yes, I'm decided. No, I don't want to. Yes, you know. So comedian Isabel Steckel went viral for a post saying, "The one word may be the most passive aggressive response you can send or receive in a text." The comedian says replying, "Sure, for an errand or task is fine, but when you are inviting someone to spend time with you, it sounds more tentative or likely they don't really want to." Linguists say, "It's all about tone and context without body language or emojis that one word can sound so cold."
Sure, like, want to go to coffee? Sure. Like, what does that mean?
Yes, but like, I'll be like, hey, do you want some more, like food wise? Sure.
It's kind of ambiguous. Is that the word?
Yeah, like, oh my God, I would love some more or whatever. And like, you know, like I've asked.
We need more definitive answers, yes or no.
Right. And I don't, I don't think it's a cultural thing. It was a cultural thing because there was this guy from Australia when I used to get trained, like do personal training. And when I would be done with whatever set he told me to do, I would like look to him for like, you know, some type of like, okay, you did great. He'd be like, it's all right. It's all right. And that's just how they say, great job. Yeah, so like, it's all right. And I'm like, I just did like 12 burpees. It's all right. He was cute, though.
He sounds cute. You did that good.
All right, we'll be right back, friends.
I think my.
All right, friends. So this is something that a lot of people are talking about. Now, Instagram, you probably have Instagram. And if you do, please follow us on at Caroline and Rashi. We have an Instagram account. So when it comes to that, when would you allow your child to get an Instagram account? I have two children, nowhere near the age of 13, but what do you think?
Yeah, I, I think I have like a little bit of different feelings on social media because I am going to tell my kids, it's not social media, it's actually professional media. And anything that you put out there.
It's true.
Is going to be viewed by your teacher, your principal.
That's a good way to look at it, yes.
And then when you want to get into college and your future employers, I'm going to really try to engrain in them that it's, it's professional media, even if your account's private. And then I'm going to try to engrain in them, like maybe I would shut the message capabilities off. Maybe I would shut comments off on their posts, like once I allow them to have that. But I think I would from like the very beginning, try to just instill that we're not being social on here. We are featuring what, what you're good at. Maybe they're a good golfer. So, okay, we can post some golf stuff.
Yeah, I look at it as sort of like a scrapbook for kids to be able to showcase what they're doing to their friends. I get it.
A really young age, I think no school, like logos can be seen on there. Like you've got to blur it out or not put it in the photo, like no locations.
That's a very smart way.
I don't know. I would just try to be like, it's professional media. I don't know why we call it social media.
Well, that's true. And what you're saying is what experts also tell people to do, which is that parental control and parental guidance as well, monitoring. So that's a question maybe you want to ask yourself. What age, if you have children or not, would you allow them to get on Instagram? Now, Child Mind Institute says the recommendation is waiting until kids are at least in the eighth grade to have access to social media. And then some others note that it really depends on your child's maturity level, which is true. Because there's some eighth graders that are not mature, right?
And I look at the young, the young people who are having major success online and I think they understood the assignment.
Yes, exactly. So for kids who are struggling with mental health issues like depression, experts recommend extra caution because social media algorithms tend to serve kids content that reflects their move and that can really perpetuate negative feelings. So what you're looking at here, Instagram is making a PG 13 inspired update to teen accounts. Parent company Meta announced that teens under 18 will be placed in a new 13 plus category. And it's going to have controls on language, themes and visuals similar to a PG 13 movie. Teenagers won't be able to opt out of the setting without parental permission. Parents can also set a stricter limit with a new limited content mode that also keeps teenagers from commenting or seeing comments on posts, kind of like what you said, you would turn off the comments, which is really good because there can be a lot of bullying, just social media bullying that happens. And you don't know how your child is receiving that. So that's something very important. And I know you posted about this on your Instagram.
I did. And so there's been a mix of comments flooding my Instagram posts about this PG 13 rating for teen accounts on Instagram. First of all, a lot of people are saying, how is there not a workaround? Kids are going to find a way around this.
That's true.
Okay, so there, that's a good point. They're going to make accounts with information that says that they're over 21. And so I don't know how we control that. We also have people saying, how about parents be parents, problem solved. We have another one.
Here's the problem, I'm just going to interject with that. Here's the problem with parents being parents is that your kids have access to this whether or not you give them a phone. So they can do stuff on their, their friend's phone, or they can do it at a computer at school possibly. So, you know, it's really hard for parents to always be there like a hawk.
Yeah. Linda says, probably a good thing. B.C. Hillman says, or don't let them have social media. So I don't know. Some, some people are saying finally Meta, they're doing something about this. One person said, will they still be able to see war crimes or is that PG? I mean, I would think that that would be under violence. So that would be censored. Yeah, Chrissy giving them like clapping hands. So a couple of different opinions and takes on here. I do think that kids really do the workaround and are going to figure out how to get on there regardless. I guess for me, and I think you would probably be the same way, I, instead of like having my kid like hide this from me, I would rather have an open dialogue and open conversation, an open account and just figure out a way that like we can be open. What are you looking at? What are you seeing? Maybe like I said, turn messaging off, turn comments off and kind of just, because they're going to get it no matter what. So I would rather them like not feel like they're hiding something and then when they're finally allowed, like going crazy.
Yes. And that's sort of what happened with me because my parents were super duper strict, couldn't really go to them for anything. That's kind of how they set the tone for everything.
And it's so funny looking back, like the way that adults would be like, ah, social media. And then remember they all got on Facebook finally. And it's like just been this whole thing, like, ah, what is Instagram? Why are you always on your phone? It's like.
Right. Well, look at you now. Yeah, kind of thing. Well, my mom still doesn't have Facebook or Instagram, but my 98 year old grandfather does. So he has, he has Facebook. So it's kind of like everybody's jumping on the bandwagon. But I think this day and age, and even parents, like my parents and my grandparents and stuff will say the same thing. Like you have to be so much more attentive to your children now than ever before, just because of the way the world is now.
And just with us being, I'll call us social media literate. It's literally part of our job. Like, we know the red flags. We know the way around it. Some people aren't as familiar. Like I, I can understand why young people want to make a dance video and post it. But it's like, how do we do this that is still going to be presented in a professional way to anybody that might see it on the internet, even if your accounts are all private? Because you know, once it's out there, it's out there. So I don't know.
You have to be careful. So.
And hopefully, because your kids see your social media and what you post on there, that's a great example as to how you're supposed to work social media. So.
I hope that I'm a good example for them. But yeah, I think the bottom line is parents just have to be very vigilant on social media.
They're going to get on there anyway. So I'd rather talk it through instead of just writing them off like, why do you want that? You're so young. It's like, okay, let's talk about it. Why do you want that? What is the purpose of having this account? What do you want to bring to people on this account? Like, I just feel like there needs to be better reason rather than just like, I want to post pictures. No, like, do we want to showcase what you've been really working on? Maybe it's art. Maybe it's gymnastics, whatever it may be. I think that there needs to be like a greater reason aside from, oh, my friends are on it.
I think so too. All right, friends. Well, we really appreciate you watching us, listening to us. We hope that you join us on our Instagram. Also, our other episodes that we got on Fox Local and on YouTube. We'll see you next time. Bye. Good afternoon. Welcome to Texas Live and Local. Happy Hump Day. I am Coco Dominguez.
And I'm Anthony Antoine. We are glad you guys are joining us here on the stream. Always a pleasure to have you. But right now, I want to start with some breaking news, if you will. We got Senator Ted Cruz there on the floor discussing the government shutdown.
Now, the legislation that the senator from New Jersey just objected to is Cruz Durbin. Its lead Democrat author is Senator Dick Durbin, the whip for the Democrat Party. This is not partisan legislation. And indeed, this exact legislation, Senator Booker, who just objected, voted for it. Just two years ago in this Congress, it passed 100 to nothing and one of those 100 was my friend Senator Booker. He voted yes. By the way, one of the most vocal advocates of this legislation was Senator Booker's former colleague, Senator Bob Benendez, another Cuban American. And there is a rich irony because after Florida, the state of New Jersey has a massive Cuban American population. To see a senator from New Jersey objecting, I know this is not his intent, but the communist government of Cuba is cheering right now because they do not want to acknowledge Oswaldo Paya. They murdered him and they don't want to have to say his name. They don't want anyone to say his name. And I know there are Cuban American residents of New Jersey whose hearts are heavy right now. They are hurting to see their elected senator object over not just honoring Oswaldo Paya, but calling out the regime. Senator Booker suggests, oh, some other general statement, Paya's a nice guy. We should do that. That's not the purpose here. I'm happy to support any resolution praising Oswaldo Paya. I've done so many times. The purpose here is to put pressure on the Cuban communist regime. And naming the street does that. Now, Mr. President, as I pointed out, Senator Booker voted for this identical legislation just two years ago. This bipartisan legislation that leads to the obvious question, what has changed? And one thing has changed. The residence of 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue. When Senator Booker voted for this bipartisan legislation, Joe Biden was the president. Today, Donald J. Trump is the president. And unfortunately, our Democrat colleagues have decided bipartisan cooperation is no longer something they're interested in. Their party is instead unified behind one principle, which is that they hate Donald J. Trump. We're in day 15 of a government shutdown because the Democrats are unwilling to fund the federal government, unwilling to pass a clean continuing resolution, which by the way, every one of them, including the senator from New Jersey, have given speeches about how it is reckless and irresponsible to shut the government down not to pass a clean continuing resolution. And yet, just earlier today, almost every single Democrat voted for the ninth time in the last two weeks to shut the government down, whereas Republicans unified to reopen it. This weekend, there will be a rally in DC of left wing radicals, the so-called No Kings Rally. Many, if not most of us on the Republican side of the chamber believe the reason the government is still shut down is because Democrat senators are terrified for that rally to occur and those left wing radicals to see that the government is open because they have to demonstrate they hate President Trump. Just this week, President Trump announced an historic Middle East peace deal. And yet, virtually zero Democrats could bring themselves even to say his name. Bill Clinton praised President Trump for the Middle East peace deal. Hillary Clinton praised President Trump for the Middle East peace deal. I commend Bill and Hillary Clinton. And I will say in my time in the Senate, that is the first time that sentence has ever come out of my mouth. I commend Bill and Hillary Clinton. But why is it, indeed Senator Booker put out a statement about the Middle East peace deal, that nowhere in it was President Trump's name to be found? I mentioned at the beginning of my remarks, there is power in saying his name. Just as the Democrats are terrified of saying the name, Donald J. Trump in any way connected to anything positive, so too are the Cuban communists terrified of saying the name Oswaldo Paya. I am hopeful that my friend, the senator from New Jersey, will put aside the partisan rancor that characterized the Democrats in this body. And we'll say, let's come together and stand for the Cuban people. Let's stand for Cuban Americans in this country. Let's stand for freedom. Let's stand for democracy. Let's stand for human rights. That ought to be bipartisan. Time will tell whether it continues to be in the United States Senate. I yield the floor.
I recognize the senator from Iowa.
I come to the floor to speak about the Pentagon's unending audit failures and to once again call for corrective action. People who have been in the Senate a while know I've been continually talking about this issue for many times, so many, I don't know how many, but I think it's something I need to keep beating the drum about. The fact is that the Pentagon is the only government agency that can't get what's called a certified audit or sometimes referred to as a clean audit, the only agency of the federal government. I have been conducting oversight on this issue since the audit began in 1993 and spoke about it many times. Today, I provide my colleagues with a new update. Recent Government Accountability Office testimony may have pinpointed the root cause audit problem. It's called, quote unquote, "The Universe of Transactions." It's a special budget bucket of transactions manually transferred from several hundred systems. It should play a pivotal role in the audit process. In theory, the universe of transactions is an accurate record of every transaction in financial statement balances. Auditors should be able to follow audit trails to verify samples taken from those balances. In practice, it doesn't work. The data is inaccurate and incomplete. Transactions can't be matched. Audit trails don't exist. So audits fail. I found essentially the same disconnect in the inspector general's first audits 30 years ago. Those audits contained these telling words, quote unquote, "No audit trail."
All right, you just heard from various senators there discussing the government shutdown and other various topics as we are in closing in on two weeks now in that government shutdown. We'll step away from that for just a second.
All right. Texas Senator John Cornyn spoke to our political reporter Greg Gruegen about his upcoming race, the government shutdown and more.
All right. So let's take a listen to that.
Greg, first of all, let me just say, it's really a dumb idea to shut down the government because the same problem that was staring in the face that you found insurmountable before the shutdown is still there when you reopen. But this is really just a performance by Senate Democrats because Chuck Schumer is afraid of his own political base and his future as the Democratic leader. So he has to show, as futile as it is, that he's quote fighting President Trump and, and Republicans. But they've simply overreached. We're happy to talk about any and all issues, including healthcare and insurance premiums, once the government reopens. But shutting down the government in order to throw a temper tantrum to try to get your way makes no sense. And we ought to be able to do better than that.
There's a lot of discussion about the Obamacare subsidy that was added on during the pandemic as an accommodation for Americans. Democrats believe it should remain in place. Is that a negotiable issue?
Well, COVID-19, the pandemic is, is over. And so the increased subsidies for Affordable Care Act or Obamacare policies need to go away. And we've got about 37 trillion. Care Act or Obamacare policies need to go away. And we've got about $37 trillion in debt, and it's a very serious issue for our country. We're spending more money on interest on the national debt than we are on defense. So we need to revisit that, particularly the provisions which take the cap off of the income levels that the subsidies were available for because we now have very wealthy people getting free insurance courtesy of the US taxpayer. And we need to, we need to look at that and reform it.
What about the issue of providing government-funded health care for people who are here without permission, the undocumented, the illegal? The Democrats say that's really not the case. You, I know, have looked into it. What is the reality?
Well, the reality is in the one big beautiful bill, which is now called the Working Families Tax Cut Act, we said that illegal aliens are not eligible for taxpayer-provided health care. It's really one of the incentives that attracts people to come to the United States illegally. It's really like a magnet, together with all the other incentives they have. The Border Patrol calls this the pull factors or the magnet that attracts people to come. So we cut that off in the one big beautiful bill, the Working Families Tax Cut Act, and Democrats want to turn that back on and deny it as much as they will. We have the proof in the text of the legislation. In addition, they want to extend for an indefinite period of time these enhanced COVID-19 subsidies, which are Obamacare on steroids. And we're not going to do that. And we're certainly not going to have that negotiation while the government's shut down.
Look, we are getting polling that, like anything, when somebody gets a subsidy, they don't want to give it up. And, and, and many of those folks live in red states. Is that part of the political calculus here? Or is this about getting the deficit, trying to make a stab at, at reducing deficit spending?
Well, I think it's just a matter of common sense. And I don't know why taxpayers in Texas and across the country should have to subsidize rich people for getting gold-plated health care plans. They can afford that themselves, thankfully, and that's good for them. But they don't need the taxpayers to pay for it. This reminds me a little bit of the subsidies for electric vehicles, where we were subsidizing rich people for buying electric vehicles that regular folks couldn't afford, but yet they were helping subsidize that. So it's a similar situation here. But to your point, once people get a financial benefit, they don't want to give it up. And I get that. But we've got serious business to take care of here.
Senator, you have served our great state for a while, and you've been through other shutdowns. What do you see happening here? Because no one seems willing to blink and get to the table.
Yeah, I think, you know, the Democrats have overreached here by their demands. All we're talking about, Greg, of course, is a short-term stopgap spending bill that will take us to November the 21st. And yet, they've asked for the sun and the moon as a price to reopen the government. We're not going to do that. But I do think that President Trump has a strong hand here because he's already canceled a number of grant programs that go to some of these blue states. The head of the Office of Management and Budget has said he's going to order some reductions in force or layoffs for people who are deemed nonessential. And a lot of this is going to begin to, to affect the, the politics, the political calculation of folks in blue states are, are Democratic friends in the Senate. So I expect this to get worse for, for Democrats, and I expect them eventually to try to find some face-saving way out. But right now, it doesn't look like that's going to happen in the next few days.
So the resolve of, of both Republicans in the House and Senate in the White House is to stay the course?
Correct, correct. We're happy to have the conversation about anything and everything in terms of government and policy, but not while the government's shut down. They need to reopen the government by agreeing to the continuing resolution that the House has already passed and is sitting here in the Senate. It's a simple matter. They just need to have the political will to do it.
Senator, I'm going to switch gears on you. You have been at the, at the tip of the spear in trying to get a space shuttle back to the great state of Texas where it belongs. There's been pushback in Virginia with the Smithsonian. Where are we at now? Is that still a possibility? I know we have some funding. Is that fight still going on?
Yeah, Greg, Senator Cruz and I got this in the one big beautiful bill. And so it is the law that the NASA Administrator, Sean Duffy, now the, the acting administrator, can make that decision. And really, I think what's important for your listeners to understand, this is, this is righting a wrong that was done back in 2010, when the Obama-era administrator put his thumb on the scale and favored states like New York and Virginia over the home of human spacecraft, Houston, Texas. So we are working with the Office of Management and Budget to implement this law, and we expect that to happen here in the coming months.
They have argued that actual ownership of the craft has been ceded to the Smithsonian and, and that we, as a government, have no right to take it back.
Yeah, I've heard that argument, and it's wrong. The Smithsonian is a federal agency. It depends for its funding, on 60% of its funding for federal funds. And they like to act independent while they want to do what they want to do. Of course, President Trump has identified a lot of woke exhibitions and things like that, that DEI focus over real history and the sorts of things that museums should be involved in. So this is maybe a wake-up call to the Smithsonian that they are not an independent agency. They are a federal agency, and they are controlled by federal law, which we passed this last summer.
Senator, I began a broadcast recently by saying, and then there were three, and I'm speaking of the race for, for your seat, in which you are seeking reelection and, and facing now not one, but two opponents. What is your reaction to Congressman Hunt's entry into this primary?
Well, obviously, it's a free country, and anybody can run for office. And, but that doesn't necessarily mean you have a, a good chance of winning. And in all the races I've run in the past, Greg, I've run and contested primaries. I did in 2020, the last time I was on the ballot. I won by, I think it was 76% of the vote. And so I, you know, I'm happy to have Congressman Hunt as part of this mix. But I'm determined to, to win this race. I'm proud of the support that I've given President Trump during his first term and now in his second term. And frankly, the Attorney General, who is, who is, has been leading in the polls until recently, has got a lot of baggage that I don't think Texas voters really quite understand yet. But they will once this campaign is over. And I think Congressman Hunt is going to find out what a big state that Texas really is.
All right, it is the last day of Hispanic Heritage Month. You know, we've been following Coco's work here all week, remembering the life and legacy of Selena.
Yep, I got a chance, really special interview, one of my favorite probably so far, the late husband of Selena Quintanilla Perez, Chris Perez. Now, we've spoken a lot about the past. By the way, the full interview is now officially out. 57 minutes. You really want to get some of these gems that he's talking about. You can get it on Fox Local and on our YouTube. But we have focused a lot on the past. Today, we talk a little bit about the future. Thinking back, what do you think, like, Selena would think about you being with wine and hot sauce? And have you ever...
I mean, it makes me smile.
Do you know what I mean? The thought of the life, the thought of...
Yeah, I mean, I think she'd be happy. I mean, you know what the funny thing is? It was like, when we were married, you know, she was alive, obviously, and all that around that time, like, we never had wine.
But that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, because you were young. It's not something that you really get into. So now it's like, okay, wine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the hot sauce, I think she'd, she'd love that, too. You know, I'm really proud of the hot sauce. You know, we've actually, again, we've, we've, we've got three flavors, now four, which hopefully you'll get to try in a little bit. But, and, and each one of the three, because the fourth one isn't out yet, but each one of the three hot sauces has won awards, which is crazy.
That's crazy to win a hot sauce. You know how good your hot sauce has to be to win an award?
Yeah, and, and the people in the hot sauce... They call, they call themselves Chili Heads.
Okay.
Like, when I went, because I went to a couple of the awards ceremonies or whatever, just thinking, oh, I'm going to go and support. Little did I know, I was going to win a couple and go, you know, go collect the trophies. It's so weird, but...
You're like, I'm here for a hot sauce award.
Yeah. And so, you know, but everybody that was there, I kind of thought, because, you know, there's some, a lot of friendly competition in the music industry, right? So when you go to the Grammys or you go to different award shows especially, there, there might, you might sense some tension here and there, you know, it comes with it. But over there in that hot sauce world, I mean, everybody was just so, Chris, hey, and like, it was this company and then that company. And they had their own stuff. And I just got to meet a bunch of really cool people. And funny enough, a lot of them are musicians.
Oh, really? That's random.
Yeah, we got to talk about hot sauce and music. It was just a great time. And, but yeah, the hot sauces have been doing great. They've, like I said, they've won some awards. We got a new one.
Yeah, we're going to get to this downstairs.
Yeah, I got to warn everybody.
I know it doesn't, look at, it's clear, but it's called Lava Caliente, which is one of your songs.
Yes, one of the songs off of Resurrection.
Yes. I don't even want to do it yet. Should we do it? Guys, this, when you turn it over?
I don't know if they'll be able to see it. Yeah, it looks like, it has that lava lamp effect when you turn it over.
Yes, when it turns, but it, and so it's...
Yeah, I don't know if you can see that.
I don't know if you can see, but we'll show it to you downstairs.
So this is the fourth one. And each one, yeah, each one has gotten hotter than the one before it. This is made out of the same stuff that they put in pepper sprays. You've got to be careful with it. It's really hot. Yeah, it's, it's really hot.
That's scary.
Yeah.
But I'm going to try it because I'm like the hot sauce queen, like, until my nose starts running, then it's official.
This is going to get you.
I don't know, for that, have that three-hour ride home.
But this feels like a drop.
Okay, we'll just do a drop. Hot sauce and wine.
Now, you ready to go try it?
Let's go.
All right.
All right, I'm excited. We got two products here. Nice. All right, Chris Perez Wine Collection.
Oh, yep, Chris Perez Wine Collection. It's called 14 Roman numerals X1V. You know, it's crazy, this logo right here? Bob actually came up with it upstairs in the studio.
It's nice.
Yeah, so, and I'm proud of it.
And why 14?
It's my lucky number. It's my birthday, August 14th. And 14 always seems to be following me around. And I'm really proud of this.
And which kind, what type of wine is this?
This is a blend. It has three different grapes, Grenache being one of them, which is one of my favorites.
All right, salud.
Cheers.
Mmm. That kind of, it's smooth. It just kind of melts on your tongue. This is good.
It is.
This could be dangerous.
We're going to, we're going to make some more. Right now, we're, we're running low on the inventory that we have now, but we're going to make some more.
Okay, so where can people buy this? This is really good. And I'm usually not a wine drinker, but this is nice and subtle.
Well, I'm a wine drinker, and I agree with you. You can order, right now, ordering online is the best option, which would be at chrispettiswinecollection.com.
Okay.
And, yeah, it'll ask if you're 21 to enter the site and then...
Barely, but you know...
And then you can, you can go ahead and order from there.
All right, perfect. Well, I love this. Thank you so much.
Well, having said all that, we have a gift for you that me and the crew put together.
Oh, my gosh.
Your own bottle.
Yes.
Yes, your own bottle, your...
Thank you. Oh, my gosh. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Look at this. I don't know. How long am I going to be able to save this? I don't know. We'll see. We'll worry about that later. Okay, now, the hot sauce. So we have this one open. And let me just show you again what I showed you upstairs, Lava Caliente, because it looks like a lava lamp. And were you serious when you said there's part of like pepper spray?
Yeah, it's the same thing they use for pepper spray, you know, the law enforcement.
Had you tried it before? And then you shed it, right?
I've been pepper sprayed. No, just kidding. I'm just kidding.
But that's another story.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so we shake it, right?
Yes, yeah, just shake it up.
This is unreal.
Yep, that's it. Now, for everybody watching, so we have three other flavors. This is the fourth one. The first one came out, it's pretty hot. Second one was a little bit hotter. Third one was habanero, so obviously it's the hottest. This one, just so you have fair warning, it's, 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 it's up there.
Oh, my gosh, I'm scared, but I'm excited. We have water, we have the pizza, all the elements to take off. Okay. Wait, wait. So I have to shake it first, right? That's...
Well, yeah. I mean, either way, it's, it's going to be hot either.
But I don't want like a chunk of lava.
Yeah. So these, these are going to have, the plan is, we'll see if we can get it done. They're going to have the label and everything. These are just prototype bottles.
Mmm, smells good.
But be careful, I'm serious. It's, it's, it's...
I have a three-hour drive home. Oh, that's too much?
Drip that off of there. Yeah.
Drip it off of there. Okay, for real?
Yeah, no, this is a really hot one. Here, maybe that little drop.
So this one has a few.
Let me see, I'll do this.
Really?
Yeah. You see your nose open up?
I think you've got too much. No, that's good.
It's going to take me all day to finish this one, but we're good.
Hold on. I, I kind of want a little bit more.
Dang. Yeah. But it's got some flavor to it. You know, it's not just completely, let me kill you, hot. But although it is hot, it's, it's got a good taste to it.
It's got a good smell. That's not, ooh, mmm-hmm. Cheers. It's not too hot, though.
Cheers. All right.
But then I'm the hot sauce queen, so there you go.
Apparently, most people would be tripping out right now.
Yeah. Until my nose starts running, that's how you know it's official.
Give it a second. Give it a second.
Wow, well, thank you so much. I appreciate you hosting us here, just being able to check in with you and seeing where you are right now. I'm excited for all of the things that you have coming up. And then there's some things that he told me separately. I'm a good secret keeper, so, yeah, there it goes. Look. Here goes the runny nose. But I'm excited for everything that you have. We appreciate your time, and we appreciate...
No, thank you, Coco.
...you letting us in to your future, because you have a bright future that you continue to just kind of expand and give us all that Hispanic Heritage Month is all year long. Chris Perez!
Thank, thank you, everybody. Thanks for the support. Thanks for following all the projects. And hot sauce will be out soon.
Oh, that's good stuff, Coco.
Thank you, thank you. I mean, it was a great interview.
You guys really got to watch the whole thing because...
Yeah, there's so much. He talks about, like, you were, you were asking me, like, hey, did he ever remarried? Did he have any kids?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I had questions for her because it's so good.
We talked about all that. There's so much that we talked about. It's about 57 minutes. So I mean, you know, Fox Local and chill.
Yeah, that's what you need, baby. Fox Local and chill. I like it.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, to be able to get this kind of, you know, information from him and little gems. And also, not just ask about Selena, but about himself, you know, because you can tell he's had to live this 30 years later and kind of relive it every day.
And we were watching portions of this, like, throughout the week. And you can see, like, in every portion, like, he's so intentional with you about, like, answering your questions. Like, you don't get that kind of real conversation just every day. So if you're really interested, it's really good. You guys should really check out the whole thing.
Yes, I was happy. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Now, what about that bottle of wine? Wait, hold up. That bottle of wine, how long? How long is it going to last?
Gone. No, I'm just joking. It's not gone. I know, I don't know. But sometimes, you can't leave wine too long because, you know, I mean, there has to be a nice medium. But he said he had something coming up in the next month or two. The new Selena y los dinos documentary on Netflix is out November, the, I think, 21st, I think somewhere around there. I'm going to check back in with him. Maybe that's when I'll pop the bottle open.
You know what? I like where your head's at. I like where your head's at.
For sure.
All right, you guys, take a quick commercial break and come right back. All right, you guys, take a quick commercial break and come right back.
And three of those becoming major hurricanes, and two of those major hurricanes were category five hurricane. So we have had some major action this season. We're still a few numbers back from our average number of named storms for this season. That's 14. A few back as well from the average number of hurricanes. We've had four, averages seven, and we are tied with that number of major hurricanes, which is three. So here are all of the names that we've used so far this season for these tropical systems that have popped up in the Atlantic Basin, from Andrea all the way down to Lorenzo. You can see all of the hurricanes. Those were Erin, Gabrielle, Umberto, and Imelda, and the two cat fives, Erin and Umberto. So the next name on the list would be Melissa, the Nestor. Will we have to worry about using those names? Right now, we don't have to, but of course, there's always the chance, as long as we are still officially in our hurricane season. At this point, though, we no longer have Tropical Storm Lorenzo. Of course, that fell apart over the last hour, so no active tropical systems in the Atlantic Basin right now. The risk for the Texas Gulf Coast after today is extremely low. Typically, if we don't get anything by mid-October, it's a wrap. We don't have to worry about it. The chance is not zero, so we'll keep watching it. But it would be unprecedented for something like that to happen. But of course, there's always a very low shot. We're watching now for development in the Caribbean Sea and the Eastern Pacific due to the fact that we have what we call the Central American gyre going there. That pattern could maybe spin something up over the next few weeks. So we're looking at our tropical hazards outlook. This is for late October, October 22nd through October 28th. And at this point, there's a low to medium chance where you see the pink and the red for a tropical depression or tropical storm to pop up. This is going to be for a big chunk of the Caribbean, Eastern Pacific. Notice, there's still a decent chance for some tropical action for much of the Caribbean Sea. So we are not out of the woods completely in the Atlantic Basin. Chances are going down day by day, but of course, we are keeping a close eye on things. Water temps out there are still, for sure, warm enough to support tropical action. We've got temps still well into the 80s, so if we could get something going, there could be that shot for that rapid development or rapid intensification, because of course, that warm water helps to fuel these tropical systems. At this point, though, nothing to worry about for the Gulf or the Caribbean. But this is that setup, the Central American gyre, and this is basically a very large area of low pressure that kind of spins this time of the year over Central America. It definitely produces some bursts of rain, rough surf, causes mudslides, but it could also aid in the formation of a tropical cyclone. So sometimes we see these smaller circulations kind of break off and spin away from the larger area of circulation, and those could turn into tropical systems. So nothing like that happening for the Gulf or for the Caribbean right now. But in the Eastern Pacific, we do have an area of concern. In fact, it's been named an area of investigation. It's Invest 91E. At this point, it has a medium chance to develop into a tropical depression or tropical storm. You can see the area of concern in orange, stretching from Guatemala City to just south of Acapulco and south and southwestern Mexico. So this disorganized area of showers and storms could become a tropical depression or tropical storm by the end of the work week, if not likely into the weekend, and it will likely bring some heavy rain, maybe some flood potential, and some gusty wind to southwest Mexico. So medium chance for development over the next two days, 40%. That jumps up to a 60% chance for development over the next week. So I'll put our GFS Future Cast into motion, and you can definitely see something that appears to be a tropical system getting stronger as we go into the weekend, passing just south of Acapulco, so bringing some heavy rain brushing by, and then early next week, passing south of Cabo. So we are going to be monitoring this closely, but it does not appear that it would take a turn and head towards the Gulf, likely heading away from Mexico as we go through the weekend into early next week. So we've got about two more weeks to get through for the month of October. Notice, there's still a low chance for development in the Gulf. It's possible, but not likely. There's a higher shot for parts of the Northwest Caribbean, Western, Central parts of the Atlantic, still a low to medium chance there. But as we get into November, chances in the Gulf go really low, and we will still be watching, of course, the Western Caribbean, Eastern Pacific, Western Atlantic. Bottom line, November, chances are going down day by day. And I think for the Texas Gulf Coast after today, chances, like I said, are extremely low. But of course, you can never say never. Things could always happen. We've had unprecedented things happen. So of course, keep checking back. There's always a risk. We've still got very warm water in the Gulf. And of course, if we see anything that is a problem, we will let you know. But so far, so good. Nothing to worry about from the tropics today, at least heading towards the Texas Gulf Coast. That's it for your tropical update for today. We'll have much more on Texas, live and local, after this.
All right, Texas-based Southwest Airlines getting a makeover. And you know what? We gotta see what it looks like here when it comes to those planes.
I hope it's something to benefit the customers. Dan Godwin shares the details from Dallas Lovefield.
The cabins in Southwest Airlines planes, where of course you'll find the passengers, gonna have a new look and feel. The carrier says the idea is to create an environment that is more modern and welcoming. What we're seeing here, larger overhead bins to accommodate more carry-on luggage. The Dallas-based airline says the first plane with this new look will be a Boeing Max 8, which is set to enter service tomorrow. And then each new aircraft Southwest receives from Boeing will include these features. The improvements will also be made to the existing fleet. Southwest says it chose the global supplier of premium aircraft seats, a company called Ricaro, to provide more comfortable seats based on customer research and product testing. Also, in-seat power at every seat and seat-back design updates. The new decor also provides what Southwest calls a refreshed lighting package and updated carpet. The look, they say, centers around a palette of blue tones that connect with the Southwest brand. The cabin also features what's being called the extra legroom experience, which will allow some passengers more room to stretch out towards the front of the cabin and near the exit rows. Southwest says all of the cabin upgrades we're talking about will be phased in over a period of many months and are part of the airline's effort to modernize its fleet. At Dallas Lovefield, Dan Godwin, Fox 4 News.
I don't need too much legroom.
I'm gonna need a little more.
You can have some of mine.
Where we going? Where we going?
Anywhere. All right, let's go over now to sports. The Texans are coming off of a bye week as they get ready to face the Seattle Seahawks on the road this Monday night.
All right, let's check in with my main man, Coach D'Amico Ryanz.
J.S. N. is an outstanding job this year for Seattle. Darnold has found a nice target to throw to when he's made that entire offense go. Whether you're covering him or not, he's making explosive plays game after game. He continues to show up, show up. And you know, J.S. N., he's definitely having a Pro Bowl caliber year. He's doing an outstanding job. They're starting up front with their defensive line, like the interior piece with their tackles, Murphy, Reed, Williams. They're really big guys inside, strong. It's hard to move those guys inside, so it starts there. And then on the edge, there's really smart players on the edge with Emosu, with Mafe, with all the guys that they have, DeMarcus Lawrence, like all those guys done a really nice job on the edges. Their entire defense line, I feel like that's the, that's the strength of their defense. And it's gonna be a challenge for us to handle their front. It's all gonna start there. Any team that's been able to move the ball versus these guys have to do a good job versus their front. And they're good in the run game, also in the pass game with the stunts that they run. They don't have to pressure much, because they get a lot of pressure with their front four guys. So it'd be a huge challenge for us, a challenge for our offensive line this week.
What do you remember most, D'Amico? You've been in that stadium a lot, about going in that stadium and playing there?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a fun place to play because of the environment. I think when you think about football environments at different stadiums, Seattle was one of those stadiums that ranks pretty high to me when it comes to, you talk about a rowdy bunch, it's gonna, it's gonna be loud, the crowd noise is gonna be there, the fans are gonna be into it. Their players do a good job of, you know, making plays and feeding it to the crowd, getting the crowd hyped up. So it's always a fun place to play, always a tough place to play. It's challenging because of the, you know, the noise, the environment, right? But you have to be able to block that out. And most time, as many times I've been in there, when you can block that out and just focus on executing, doing the things you need to do to play good football, that's what's gonna help you, right, to quiet the crowd.
With the exception of the, of the Smiles one?
Go ahead.
With the exception of, of those, like a lot of the top teams in the AFC have already lost quite a few games. I'm just curious, what do you make of that? And is that possibly something you'll lean on coming forward that, that it is our, it's right there as well?
That doesn't creep into my mind at all about where the other AFC teams are, what their record is. It's still early in the season. Right? A lot of teams had a lot of really good starts to the season, but we all know, and that's our focus, it's all about how you finish the season. It's all about how your team grows throughout the season. Just because you have a great start, doesn't mean it's gonna be a great finish. Just continuing to work, control what you can control, and you truly focus on one game at a time. That's all that matters. Can't focus on what the other teams are doing, the outcome of their games. It really doesn't matter, right? It has nothing to do with how you go and play, how you go and prepare. You don't do anything different, because other teams are where they are record-wise. Truly focusing on us and getting better.
Do you think the biggest reason why your defense has played so well to the fore, they're ring number one in scoring games?
Our defense has done a really nice job because of the players and the work that they put in. We have outstanding players, outstanding men, not just players who go out, they work the right way every single week.
All right, hopefully we get that win, get back to 500, their entry on the season.
I believe.
I believe too. Let's get it done, fellas.
Let's go.
All right, Sunday's right around the corner. Okay, so as we head to Dallas now, we're gonna look, take a look at what's happening there at the City Hall. And some changes are being made in the future, and a big part of that might be taking a look back in time.
Yep, Lori Brown explains.
It would be, it's incomprehensible to me that we, you know, that we would think about tearing it down.
Norman Alston is an architect who specializes in historic buildings.
This is a statement building by a statement architect in a city that was making a statement at that time.
He said there is a story behind City Hall's bold design.
'63, you know, Dallas was desperate to throw off the shame of the Kennedy assassination.
Alston says this City Hall building was the first step in a series of goals to make Dallas a modern city.
They wanted something modern and bold. That's this, the shape right here. They wanted a place for the community to come together. That's the rationale for this huge plaza.
The city hired internationally renowned architect Ayen Pei, who also designed the Louvre Pyramid in Paris.
Inside the impressive new amphitheater, three mayors cooperated in cutting the ribbon to unveil the great city seal which dominates the room.
Dallas City Hall opened to the public only 47 years ago in 1978.
Over the weekend, the new occupants of the seventh and sixth floors were moving their documents, typewriters, and supplies.
And the people will truly feel that this is a city hall that is inviting.
How long is a building like this built to last?
This building's built forever. This is a concrete structure inside and out. There's, doesn't have a, doesn't have a shelf life.
But Dallas City Councilman Chad West, chair of the city's new finance committee, says the city's years of deferred maintenance are taking a toll.
You know, leaking bathrooms and other things. We have major infrastructure issues here. We have a roof that needs to be replaced. The plaza right, right in front of me here is supposedly pulling away literally from City Hall. Whenever it rains, you have fountains of water draining into the parking garage. All of that needs to be fixed.
West says the cost is estimated to be between $50 and $100 million.
We have got to put all the heads in one room and figure it out fairly quickly, because if our deferred maintenance bill is $100 million, we've got to make a decision on if the taxpayers can sustain that.
West admits there would be costs associated with a move as well, which could entail buying or leasing an office tower. But these multiple acres next to the $3 billion convention center project have become very valuable.
The building, the plaza, and the parking garage cost about $43 million, but most of the people here today seem to think that it's well worth it.
But will Dallas City Council members today agree?
There are some places, I think you have to draw that line, and this is one of those places.
A battle is brewing near central Texas, where some of the neighbors are fighting this battle, they're fighting the building of a data center.
All right, so we're gonna see more about that back and forth. Joining us now is Breonna Carroll from Taylor.
We can fight until, until God tell me to walk away. I'm gonna fight.
The proposed location for the Blueprint Project's data center is roughly 87 acres of land on Second Avenue in Taylor. It's land that Pamela Griffin and her siblings grew up playing on. It was later gifted to the neighborhood in 1999 by the Bland family. It's land that Pamela Griffin and her siblings grew up playing on. It was later gifted to the neighborhood in 1999 by the Bland family, who signed it over to the Texas Parks and Recreation Foundation to be held in trust for future use as parkland by Williamson County. It was never turned into a park. Residents say for more than two decades, it sat empty, overgrown and unkept. Then in April, it was sold to Blueprint Projects for a sum of $10 million to be turned into a data center. Griffin says it's not the data center that she's fighting. She's fighting for the land to be used for the benefit of the neighborhood, the way it was always intended to be.
They're missing a point altogether and I just wish they would see our side of it. I thought deeds in Texas was above everything.
The city's website states that economic benefits from the project could be as high as $30 million in additional revenue for Taylor and that the funds could be used for things like streets, sidewalks and schools.
I don't think it's in anyone's interest except for the cities.
But residents say their neighborhood has been neglected by city leadership for some time, with roads in disrepair and sidewalks non-existent.
The city is getting all this money, but where is it? I don't see a dime of it. Our roads are still messed up.
They say what's on track to happen with the parkland is just a continuation of that pattern. But while neighbors don't feel heard by the city, Griffin says there has been an outpouring of support from the surrounding community.
The community has, literally has been come out to support us and they have showed up, but I need them to continue to show up. I need them to continue to put pressure on our leaders to help us do this fight for this park, to give the Bland family the appreciation they deserve because they gave it to us.
All right, so let's wrap up here on a Wednesday with Texas Live and Local. You know, it's never a bad time to think about the weekend. Would you know what's going on this weekend?
Yeah, there, first of all, everything Halloween is already out. Tonight, I'm going to be going over to the Nightmare on Robinson Road, which is probably the spookiest. Anthony, it is crazy. It gets really packed there during Halloween night. So the best time really to go and check out all of those homes decorated would be during the week. But they've also got the Buffalo Bayou mural festival happening on the east end all weekend, the Oktoberfest at Skyline at Post Houston.
I like that one.
Yeah, and the weather is great.
The weather is great.
There's so much going on, so get on out and do something. Just don't say, "Fall into something."
Fall into a little something, something. All right, thank you guys for joining us here on Texas Live and Local. We'll see you tomorrow, same time, same place at 4 o'clock.
All right, Fox 26 News at 5 starts next.